Good afternoon, everybody. I apologize for a little bit late. Let's go ahead and dive right in. I want to welcome everybody to this regularly called workshop for the Central City Council. It's August twenty first, uh, twenty twenty five. And, uh, one P M. Item number one is public comments. So we have any public commenters today? No, none? We'll move on to item two, which is to discuss as may be needed, any regular meeting agenda items for tonight's meeting. So council or staff, anybody have anything? Need to discuss or pull or anything? Really? Very good. Mr. Chandler, that was quick. We've been open two minutes. You're up.
All right. Excellent. Good afternoon, everybody. And so the first item, uh, of course, this is the, uh, second rating, but, uh, public hearing. At West Adams near, uh, nineteen seventy-one. So just a reminder where it's located. And that, uh, in, in terms of neighbor response, there was one in opposition. But overall, the, the neighborhood has been quiet about the, uh, initial impact on them. And part of it is probably because of the design and what the, what the developer has known to do up front. And that is limit the height adjacent to, uh, that part of the, uh, not like with neighborhood to single story, the twenty-foot vegetative buffer, which primarily just by preserving the trees that are out there, that's going to, uh, fill it, but they're also, uh, committed to supplementing that buffer. And also limiting, uh, uses adjacent to the neighborhood to, um, to non-restaurant uses. And so, of course, P N Z voted seven to one for approval. And that, that one in opposition just brought up some traffic concerns and I think just neighborhood concerns. And so, yes, just kind of standard, uh, really the only other thing to point out. The sidewalk, of course, extending that along West Adams, but just, uh, for our current code. Any questions about that one? Do you all anticipate wanting a presentation for that? Or, um, you know, for this public hearing, second reading?
I know I've seen that before. Was that one of them that we went through last week and then had the incident? Technical difficulties?
You're talking about the last one, not this one, right? You're talking about the one you just?
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. Yes.
But that one, we're gonna have a public hearing and all that good stuff. Okay.
All right, this one, well, first read, I'm brand new. It's an expansion of, uh, Piladio Chemical Plant. That doesn't work so well. Well, you know what Piladio is on, on training road with, within the Northwest Industrial Far. And so this is a, uh, an additional, additional use permit. Uh, because our code requires industrial uses that are not listed. To even in heavy industrial, which the base zoning is heavy industrial, requires conditional use permit. We don't define chemical plant. So in twenty seventeen, when this was approved and then developed, uh, the heavy industrial base zoning with conditional use permit, expansion of that, which is an additional C E P. And so there's a lovely site plan. Just trust me, it's, you will see it, uh, in, in the regular agenda. But it's, it's really just expanding their operations, also expanding their rail access. They do have a desire to expand also to the south in the future. You know, they've been working with us that includes, um, a, a strip of property that we own that's, that's along the rail. And so that's just to give you a heads up. That's, that's not part of the scope of this request. That would be an additional phase. Would come back to you all, still in a lot of discussion, uh, that needs to be had with P D C and, uh, and also city manager. But this is just for an expansion of their existing facilities. Um, E S P, Performance Food Route, for, Mary, remember that they were very, has been very opposed previously, even, even when, uh, the first C U P thing for twenty seventeen. I don't know if they're gonna show up, but we have not heard from them and they did not send a response. They did not show up at E N Z. So presumably, uh, you know, or, or perhaps Piladio has been a really good neighbor. And, uh, they don't have concerns now, but.
They have been contacted, though.
They have, yes.
Is that because of two hundred foot rule they've been contacted? And all those lots are big, so I didn't know.
Yes, so they were, they were notified and we just kind of heard from them. But otherwise, uh, you know, in just evaluating, there haven't been any code issues with Piladio to what we, uh, to what we know, they've been a good name. Yeah, unanimous approval. And then the last one, uh, Cheddar's. So this is just for the site plan. No, I'm sorry. This is the C U P. Sorry, getting confused with the additional case. Uh, the C U P, because Cheddar's the restaurant. They typically have a bar within the restaurant as required conditional use permit for the alcohol sales. So the, the site plan, uh, this has gone through a development review committee process. Uh, there, we, there has been discussion recently also just about the driveway, the second driveway here. Uh, in proximity to, to the interstate. And so that, that is something that, uh, and we all can certainly discuss. I, I think it, it could be potentially eliminated and perhaps that even widen the under driveway need, but you know, it's just a preference of theirs. Shouldn't be an absolute necessity.
What's, what would be the issue there? That's just the access road, right?
Yeah, it is the access road. Just, just questions about, uh, you know, just the, the proximity to, to the intersection. Is, uh, it's, it's shorter than, um, than, than best practice and certainly shorter than tech stop requirements, even though since it's not on a tech stop roadway, we technically, I don't apply. But it's just, it's less than optimal just in, in, in case the, the turning movements, you know, someone. These, these folks taking a left onto Bray and, and somebody coming around off general routes taking a right, maybe a little too fast. Just that potential conflict.
Oh, I've been looking at it sideways. I, the, even when I thought before, I was thinking, yeah, I was thinking that she said.
Sorry, this is Bray Street. And of course, there's.
Is that against the ordinance we have or just recommended?
It, it, so apparently it is, uh, in, doesn't comply with one of our engineering standards. Twenty feet from the curb return. So, um, from where this curb return ends, you need twenty feet of separation before you start something different. And that's just from a movement standpoint, that's still a little bit shallow realistically, because if somebody's turning right and then trying to turn left immediately, then that's two movements that are back to back really too quickly. Normally you want to see be able, people be able to make the turn, gather themselves and then make it, make a second movement. So this just crunches two turning movements really too close together when you're, you're right there. But it's definitely, it's, it's workable that they can adjust their fact, they get for island design.
So they will do that or do we need to ask if they do that?
But they will do this.
Okay. I like to see it meet our standards.
Yeah, so if, but that's still not an optimal standard as David alluded to, so. It's, uh, but at a minimum, they will meet our. Just has not been reflected to now, although we can.
We want different than that. We need to see more standards. I'll make them do more than standard.
Sure. So, um, but, but hey. You, it, it, we, we will ensure that it does meet our, our engineering standards. If you all wanted to add that, that is fine to.
The business is for our.
It is, but so the site plan and the first, that's still, still is binding. Otherwise, great project, great location.
So when they, so when they come, come back with an adjusted site plan to meet standards, does it have to go back to council?
Uh, so good, good question, Kathy. That kind of adjustment. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that they would have to, but it can be part of the motion.
They may have to eliminate the driveway. They may have to eliminate.
They have to eliminate a driveway, then the, that gets changed. If they just had to move it, you know, twenty feet, then that I would say that probably is not, but in, in terms of what's substantial.
I think direction from council will be to make it comply, whether it comes back or not.
Okay.
Your department needs to be sure that it complies.
Oh, thanks, Andrew. They're leaving the driveway. They'd be cheaper if they get more parking places.
So.
Does the elimination of the driveway, will that still meet standard? With enough ingress and egress?
That would meet our standard.
I just think one.
If they, if they could make this, like they might do with, with just one. And so, you know, that, that could be part of it. Okay, meeting, meeting our all standards. Um, and that revision related to that, it doesn't have to.
What impact, uh, would that have as far as ingress and egress except for being so close to the high school? Of course, I know their busy times will not be the heavy traffic times from the high school, right? Weekends and later in the evening, but is that taken into consideration at all? Or does it need to be? That's just a curiosity question.
Uh, so I'm sure Jason takes a look at that in terms of the mobility analysis.
Yeah.
But, you know, and I do know that, that, um, school district was also notified. But, you know, and they didn't respond because this is, this is within the, it, you know, it's outside the three hundred foot requirement. And so, and so it's not, so we didn't hear any concern from them. But we don't have any concerns that I'm aware of related to peak hour timing for the restaurant versus, uh, school traffic.
Okay, thanks.
It's all I have. Any other questions?
For ease of voting tonight, um, it sounds like it might be good for Brian to add a condition related to the site by needing to, to confide with standards. And I shall disagree and ask Brian to do that between now and the, the meeting, please. Thank you.
That's moving. All right. Counsel, anything else from Brian? That's a sit-down restaurant. Right? That's what we wanted there.
Yeah. And just, just so you know, uh, Chick-fil-A, Chick-fil-A across the street, of course, across Bray, and then Cheddar's, they're, they're going almost simultaneously. We, we had a request for a meeting for both of them for their freestanding signs.
Yeah.
Uh, they were interested in more height. And we, we explained the, the whole code. They're fine actually with the thirty-five foot. Both of them, they would both, the same standards were applied. And we said, you know, but you can add an additional, uh, sign on the other side of your building, wall sign. They said, oh, we didn't know that. Okay, so.
City manager wants to know. City manager wants to know if any of those will preclude a Chewy's.
Should not.
That kick them out or?
Think so.
Well, it's gonna be mad. They've been trying to get Chick-fil-A for twenty years. We're gonna have three.
I like getting sauce out of the back of a fifty-seven Chevy. All right, what else? Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Next item is to receive a presentation and update regarding the Tanglefoot Music and Barbecue Festival. It's based.
So there is four, um, now I was gonna ask to see if, yeah, items that are, uh, meaning public hearings on sat readings. Do you need presentations on any of those?
Yeah, I don't think so, but we still need to do the public hearing on each one individually.
Yeah.
Right? Because they're all separate.
Correct. So read them into the record of the public hearing votes. Those with nine, ten, and eleven.
It's me.
Good afternoon, council. I am going to provide a quick five, ten-minute update on Tanglefoot specifically relating to the budget and marketing effort. So just a quick general event overview for Tanglefoot. Uh, the event dates are Friday and Saturday, September twelfth and thirteenth. Uh, the focus of the event and the experience is what's in the name, music and barbecue. So there are eighteen, uh, country music acts that will be taking the two stages that will have. And the expected attendance or anticipated attendance that we're planning for is eleven thousand, and that includes Friday and Saturday night. Uh, it'll be held at the M L K Festival Ground. And then, like I said, one of the aspects of the experience is barbecue. And so there will be several craft of barbecue vendors throughout the event for a specific portion of the event from all over the country. And we hope that that, uh, gives people the opportunity to experience barbecue. We all have Texas barbecue events. Um, but we'll have Kansas City, North Carolina, South Carolina. There'll be several other, uh, barbecue experiences for them. So just some background to really quick. Uh, the city underwent a special events, a strategic plan a couple of years ago. And through that process, it was, uh, identified that Temple needed an iconic event. And that is how the idea of Tanglefoot Music and Barbecue Festival was born. So we put out an R P. We knew we needed an event professional and event production company to help us put something of this caliber on. And so through the R P process, we selected Sound Skills. And Sound Skills is based out of New Braunfels, and they do have, um, a track record with larger festivals all over the country. But particularly working with municipalities, and they felt that that was very important when selecting a firm. So their responsibilities include, they're procuring all of the talent, working through the contracts, um, and working with a talent management company to do so. They're coordinating site logistics, of course, working very closely with our city, all of our city departments mostly, um, as far as logistics and, and, uh, event operation goes. They're doing all of the website. Uh, they created the Tanglefoot website. They have the Tanglefoot social media page. They're doing several marketing and P R, um, activities that we'll talk briefly about. And then they did the graphic design and branding for the project for the festival. They're also overseeing, um, anybody who's interested in being a vendor, anybody who wants to be a sponsor or anybody who wants to volunteer. They're overseeing all of those processes. And then, um, they're responsible for also overseeing all of the ticket sales and managing that program as well. So up to date, or to date, we've sold thirty-one hundred tickets just over. And that includes two-day tickets, single-day tickets, and the barbecue tickets, because those are, those are separate. I believe you do have to have a, an admission ticket to purchase the barbecue ticket, so you can't just purchase the barbecue ticket. So I want to provide a little bit of context, because with us never doing this before, I wasn't sure, is this a good number? Are we happy with this number where we're at? And so we asked Sound Skills that question, because they're the event professionals. Uh, and so this is some information that they provided us. So obviously, first year festivals, it might be a little bit slower. People don't know what the festival is. They don't know what the experience is gonna be like. So in theory, the second year or future years would be more successful than the first year. Simply because the first year is all about creating that experience and getting people used to what that is, where Temple's at. Did my friends go? Did my family go? Did they have fun? What was it like? And then word of mouth is very important. Obviously, weather, um, and other family commitments that someone might have, they're waiting to see if their calendar is gonna be clear for that weekend. So maybe they haven't purchased their tickets yet. And then something that Sound Skills is sticking to is the idea that sixty percent of ticket sales are gonna happen the last two weeks. Um, and which we're getting really close to that. So we, Sound Skills is confident and we're confident that we will see an increase in ticket sales in these last couple of weeks. So just some industry-wide considerations that Sound Skills also shared with us is just nationwide festival attendance is down. Uh, and that could be just reduced, uh, discretionary income. Um, people are being more careful with how they prioritize their spending. And, um, just the economic uncertainty that, that we're facing right now. But overall, they're confident and they, they feel comfortable with where we are at right now with ticket sales. So for the budget, uh, we recently, uh, put through a budget amendment or a contract amendment to increase the budget. And I'm gonna go over those notable budget increases. There were a few smaller ones. These are the ones that I wanted to bring to your attention. So early on in the process, um, it was decided that we wanted to increase our talent budget from what it originally was. And that was to bring in top-notch talent to Tanglefoot into Temple. And then with the hopes of, of course, that that would increase the revenue for the festival by having better talent. When you in, um, increase the talent cost, then your booking fee increases. Um, and so that amount also went up a little bit, which, um, which brought that, uh, first number up. Then we additionally added some additional advertising. Uh, the branding project was a little more, um, robust than what, uh, Sound Skills had originally, uh, predicted or budgeted for. And then lastly, they did, uh, stakeholder meetings, which I know some of you attended those back in April. Um, and those were really, those were really well done and really, um, uh, they went over well with our stakeholders and I think got a lot of people excited in our community, wanting to participate, and then it generated some interest. Uh, the, um, V I P deck was in addition. There's already one that was included, that there was so much interest in it. That Sound Skills went ahead and purchased another deck and, um, and created that opportunity for someone to take advantage of. And then lastly, there was no, uh, shuttles in the original budget. And talking more through the parking plan and the traffic plan, we did identify that shuttles were going to be needed. So that was also an increase, uh, in the budget there. We have, um, as far as sponsorships go, the previous goal was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we have met that goal. And the new goal is, or was, three hundred and eighty-six, but Sound Skill passed or passed that goal as well. Uh, so we're doing really, really well there, and we're really excited about, uh, the sponsorships coming in and the support that we're getting. So really quickly, just a couple slides on the P R and marketing strategy. So first for P R, Sound Skills is using a company called Painting Pictures. That's the P R firm that they're working with. And I'm not really gonna go through all of these things with you, but I did want to, uh, just mention a couple. And, and the, the message here is they're going local, but then they're also going nationwide. So we're, they're, they're getting Tanglefoot out there everywhere. Um, I wanted to point out the Let's Talk Temple video is something that, uh, Noelli did as part of our efforts. Uh, it was a video to highlight and hopefully educate our residents here locally the, about the hotel motel fund and how those funds are allowed to be used. And that is what, uh, is funding the festival. And we worked really closely with, uh, finance on that as well. Uh, but yeah, this is, this is a lot of really, really great stuff. And, um, they're working with, of course, regional, Waco, Colleen, um, Parker Heights, uh, Salado. But then also expanding into the larger markets, making it, talking about Tanglefoot like it's a road trip really destination. Um, and, and different things that are going on. Um, positioning Tanglefoot as a, like a food lover's, uh, festival with showcasing the barbecue pit masters. A lot of them are renowned pit masters, and so getting that messaging out there too, who's kind of been their angle. Uh, so a lot of really great things, local to national. And then as far as marketing goes, uh, Grayscale is the company that Sound Skills is using to do all of the marketing efforts. They, uh, did create a webpage, of course, Tanglefoot Tips dot com. The ticket page to date has seen just over seventy-six thousand visits, which is really impressive. They have digital ads going, um, radio and social media for sure. I believe they also have, uh, Google and YouTube ads going. And then they're using a local influencer program, uh, for, for influencers who frequent festivals. We've talked to them about, um, influencers who maybe do food, uh, foodie type things, foodie travel and stuff like that. So they have a database, and we've even given them some influencers that we're, we're aware of to try and bring people into the festival that way. And then as far as what we're doing from the city perspective, our team, which is Discover Temple and then the city marketing team, we are, uh, we wanna highlight our local, uh, barbecue vendors who are gonna be a part of the festival, so chefs and millers. Uh, we have worked with them to get some interviews and just tell the story of their businesses. So we'll be posting those. Um, and then, uh, blogs, our Discover Temple team has written several blogs to, um, highlight the, uh, really great reasons to come to Temple, to visit Temple, to participate in Tanglefoot. Additionally, they added an Amtrak section onto the, um, landing page that they created for Tanglefoot to try and promote train travel for Tanglefoot into Temple. They created a Temple ticket that is a special Tanglefoot edition. They created a landing page, which is where the Amtrak information lives, but it's, it's, um, it's, it eventually will send you to the Tanglefoot page, but it's just a really great landing page. It has the, uh, barbecue itinerary. So if you were to come to Temple on Friday, other than the festival, what else is there to do? So sharing some of that information with people and how they can experience Temple through the landing page. And then lastly, we've done some paid advertorials in several of those, um, um, publications. And that is, uh, been a real partnership between us, Painting Pictures, and Grayscale to make sure that we're having as robust communication as possible to get the word out about Tanglefoot. This is an example of advertorials that we put in there, um, in those publications. And I think this one was in text appeal, so I just wanted to show it all visual of what an advertorial looks like. As far as outreach, uh, in conjunction with the P R and marketing efforts, we, uh, have done some printed collateral, so we've given lots of information to our local hotels. Of course, our downtown businesses have a lot of printed collateral that we share with them. We have visited the West Temple businesses, um, several of them. And additionally, any other, uh, Bell County businesses that are in our area. Uh, we have flyers, uh, postcards, um, stickers. I know some, we even, I think downtown currently, we work with Bo on getting some really big, uh, like window teacups for some of the vacant businesses to kind of fill that space. Uh, so a lot of really great print materials to kind of go out very locally. We've worked with the downtown stakeholders. Uh, we are constantly talking to them each month. This is the downtown committee. So we talk to them, provide them updates at those meetings. Uh, the downtown lowdown meeting is held quarterly. The next one is on August twenty-seventh, and we're gonna be talking to downtown businesses on how to leverage the Tanglefoot traffic. Uh, because we don't want anyone to feel, um, that it's gonna hinder their business. We want them to be able to take advantage of it, and we wanna give them some, uh, pointers on tips on how they can do that and leverage that uh, traffic that'll be downtown. Holly, uh, and her team also did some in-person downtown, uh, meetings and visits with the stakeholders to make sure they had the traffic plan and map and all the information of what's gonna be happening, the days leading up to Tanglefoot, and then on those days. Our downtown team developed a stakeholder newsletter. It's called the Downtown Download. Uh, and so Sarah, who's our downtown coordinator, will send that out, um, as needed. And then she also sends them out, uh, following the downtown committee meetings as like downtown meeting minutes. If someone was unable to attend. So that newsletter also has included information on Tanglefoot. Lastly, we are Texas music friendly, and so we have been collaborating with the Texas Music Office. And they recently put us in the newsletter that they did for August, I believe. And then, um, they did a social post just yesterday, I think, on the, on the Texas Music Office's social page. So that is also really good publicity. And that's all that I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Got a few. Can you go back to the revenue page? I think maybe in the first one. Felt net profit loss proposed. So that nine sixteen is a loss, right? Okay, what is? Cause I know that, that Sound Skills has been paid. A lump sum, correct? How's, how's that? Pardon? Okay, yeah. They're, they're getting their money. And then after that, what is the revenue share? Do then, does the city of Temple then get everything? Um, is there a split there? Seventy to who?
To the city.
Of every dollar? You know, I don't mean everybody, I mean.
Melissa online.
Yeah, and we can get back to it. Let's not hold the meeting up. But, you know, it's, that's, that's a lot of money, right? We hear lots of, uh, chat around town about it. I think it's good, and not everything, you know, first out of the gate makes money. Um, and there are a lot of, uh, longer-term benefits that will come. Uh, you know, later that we'll never know about. So all that's fine. I just think it's important that council understand. Um, you know, kind of the, the flow here. And then number two, on the days of the festival, you're talking about, you're already engaging with the downtown property owners. And I know that there's some assigned parking, right, with shuttles, et cetera. But I see a lot of people, because I'm that guy, I would do the same thing. I would go find my own parking. Close to, you know, and, and take up, take up a place at Burke Creek or take up a place, you know, someone's trying to take advantage of the festival. Um, businesses, and then all their parking is taken up. So what, is there a parking enforcement plan?
We are working with the businesses, uh, to get a list from them of, for employee parking. Um, I'm not. I don't think there is any enforcement planned.
Cause somebody's gonna roll in at nine A M. on Saturday, parking front of Burke. Because somebody's going to roll in at nine AM on Saturday, parking front of Bird Creek or wherever, all day. Right, they're never going to move. And that's not necessarily fair to the, and you're talking about what can your, say you're having stakeholder meetings, what, how can this festival be an advantage to you? And then because of the festival and parking, there's no advantage to them.
I also wondered, and you just came back in, you're redoing the old Linkfield site and you're going to do the hydro mulch and all that to make it a pretty grassy knoll. But don't you think people are just going to park on it? Is that going to, is that going to mess it up?
We're going to fence that.
Yeah, we're fencing that off.
Okay.
Because we're not just doing that, we're doing irrigation.
Okay.
That and the, the site we own, where they parked the, the person's. Yeah. Created last year right next to the, or we're the old chain.
Yeah, I wondered if we didn't want to, it's, it's good parking.
Hold off on that.
There, yeah, just allow people to park there and then finish up after.
They, they're out there, I mean, I, I passed that site today.
Yeah, I saw there was a lot of activity over there.
So where is the shuttle park? Oh, that's right.
And I think since we last spoke, there's a few changes to the parking plan out from Mercury, not the identified from the last meeting. But we are having paid parking at the Santa Fe Plaza and the garage at North Street Garage. And so our hope is as people are coming in.
The extra curb garage is, that's for parking for a certain level of tickets.
Yeah, that'll be the. Correct, and then there are some reserved spaces on the first level for downtown businesses that identify for their staffing. So they, they are aware that people will probably come and park in front of their businesses. I will say from our meetings, the general consensus is that the downtown businesses are excited. We've been working with them to give them ideas to be outside of their business, to really engage with the, there's going to be a lot of foot traffic. Regardless if they park in front of their business, which is unfortunate and the enforcement is just going to have to, I think they're just going to have to anticipate that. But we're encouraging them to do specials, to try to engage with people who are going to be either in a temple, do the downtown and get out of the businesses and really capture those people, maybe for after the festival or as they're walking toward the festival. Especially from the plaza, because I know we talked about that's a lot of opportunity there to get through a yard and make their weight brown. So it is, I think they're anticipating it, that's why we want to make sure at least their staff was taken care of. Then everything else, we'll just try to encourage people to go to those identified spots.
Well, as an aside, excuse me, but as a side, along those same, that's the same thought line. Bird Creek, I think, is requesting that they be able to close off the whole street in front of there and just make it a walking area, kind of outreach for everybody on that. All businesses on that block to be able to expand, so they're taking advantage.
I think it's just the space in front of his.
Okay, okay, well then, but no.
But same idea.
Yeah, they're saying.
Are we going to help the two hour parking?
We're not doing it now, so we, I, I, we're not. So yes.
Well, Heather, you and Lindsay have done such a good job and your crew. I go to the downtown stakeholder meetings and I feel like everyone's really excited about it. And y'all have been giving a lot of information about parking strategies and number of tickets sold, so they'll know how many people to have on staff that day. So there's been really good communication between y'all and them, so thank you for doing that and I, I think it's going to be fantastic. I am super pumped.
Me too.
Holly's back to your group.
Yes, she is, and Holly runs the show at the downtown stakeholder, I'm sorry, I couldn't see.
And I will say, Mayor, that it is seventy thirty in the net profit. Seventy to the city, thirty to the vendor. And when Heather had the budget on the community, what that doesn't capture and is harder to measure is some of the goal of tourism.
Absolutely.
Is bringing the economic benefit to the community.
Yep.
The heads in the beds, just.
Passing out the cars.
Yes.
Well, you know, even somebody that, that drives up from Austin, enjoys the festival, sees downtown or whatever and says, you know, grabs the family and comes back to picnic, is your cheese or, you know, that's the stuff that's, that's not able to be measured.
That's, and, and what, just the strategic plan that was part of.
Yes, definitely, and we do have a formula, our destination marketing team does have a formula utilized to estimate economic impact as well.
And then they also had the trackers, right? That, that doesn't sound good. They, they hired stock, they had the, you know, the cell phone.
We do, yes. It's called.
What's that called?
Place your AI.
Does that have the ability to see if somebody came up here from Round Rock to be able to tell if they came three weeks later from Round Rock or?
I don't know, it drove down to like the individual, but it definitely shows origin market where that they came from Round Rock and then it'll tell you.
Will be able to, if after this, we have a bunch of people coming from areas that people came from for Tanglefoot, we'll be able to tell it made a difference.
Yes.
We'll have that.
And just as a reminder, the festival is funded through the Hotel Motel Fund, which is a restricted revenue fund. It can only be used for purposes for the promotion of tourism to Temple with the goal of increasing hotel room night stays. So this source of funding is not available to provide additional police officers or firefighters, fill potholes, street crews, mowing crews, parks crews. This source is limited to things that promote tourism into Temple. So just keeping that in mind, this is not competing with other needs throughout the community. However, that tourism that generates additional sales tax, that sales tax can then in turn be used for basic city services, including public safety and street maintenance and park maintenance and similar needs and priorities.
I have a double question. About the barbecue. Is it built, what, are they having a cook-off or?
It's not a cook-off, it's not a competition, it, it's just tasting.
Is it tasty or you can, you just, your ticket, you can taste all of it?
And you get to taste all of it and they're meant to have craft barbecue, so unique tastes, not out of what you would expect. You want to add anything?
I can touch more on the barbecue is it'll be kind of set up similar to like a vendor would be set up, it'll be in a horseshoe shape out located at the festival grounds and there will be certain barbecues like Rossler's, Chuff's, Millers. They'll all have like their one real specialty item. And so it'll be a unique item. So I went to one in Fort Worth, their Rossler's was there and they had a Bloody Mary double date. And so then some other barbecue places had like a little full pork with some peach, a peach on it on a crustini. So you're not getting a full plate, you're getting different specialty items from each one of those barbecue vendors. And I can tell you twenty to twenty-five of those, you do get plenty full and you keep going back and why, why don't you just keep going back?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, Heather, I think you got petticoats too, didn't you?
There are petticoats. There will be petticoats, so that'll be an unique experience, yeah, and that'll help move people around after too.
The Chicago two or three week scale, all the petticoat bicycles and now battery power. All right, thank you, Heather. Thank you for that. All right, next item is to discuss Split B Road and adjacent development project, Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mayor, I hate to see a good podium in good place, so. So we're, we're going to talk a little bit about Split B Road, which is the road that was left as we realigned North P Ridge. There's a section that used to be just P Ridge that is now left on its own, so it's been abbreviated the name Split B. A little bit of background, the right of way was initially dedicated for the realignment of P Ridge in twenty twenty. And that came through North Gate Phase Five flat. As we moved into twenty twenty-two and the construction of that subdivision began, capitalized on the public participation agreement to actually contribute to the realignment of that road. And, and get that road completed. Twenty twenty-three, this is a, a development that is adjacent to really what, what sparked our conversation around Split B Road. But to the, to the north of the future potential development, you have North Ridge Town Homes that was constructed in Texas Access off of North P Ridge. Twenty twenty-four, there was a zoning case that came before you for a piece of property just south of the North Ridge Town Homes development. And it is matching pretty similar density to what we see in North Ridge Town Homes. It's a little bit lighter density capped at twelve units per acre. And it also has a neighborhood services component, there's three, three to five acres of that development as well. That will be a neighborhood services type zoning, so this was a planned development that's approved in twenty twenty-four. Current conditions, so just as you look at what's out there today for Split B, it's, it's an old county road section. About twenty feet wide, edge pavement to edge pavement, there's no, no kind of ribbon or edge protection curb that goes with it there. And the asphalt on that road is in generally okay shape, but it is just a gravel base with a layer of asphalt on the top of. The right of way through there is about fifty feet right of way. We'll dive quickly into roadway classifications and what we look as we, we plan for our city to grow. These are the general categories, functional classification that roads fall into. We won't spend a whole lot of time talking about a lot of our larger roadways, because that's not really what, what's pertinent to this discussion. But you see in the far right-hand column, what you generally expect on any given roadway classification, what that traffic might be in daily trips per day. And you'll also see a term that comes up here shortly in the presentation, it's AADT, that's average annual daily trips. So that means if you look at this over the course of a year, on average, you could expect to see some range of trips that looks like that column on your far right-hand side. Talking a little bit more specifically, we're going to focus on those bottom, bottom three streets that are referenced there. And Neighborhood Collector is typically a thirty-six foot wide, back to curb to back to curb street. And does have curb and gutter and it, it's a thousand, five thousand is what you'd anticipate your, your average annual traffic to be. When we talk about the urban local or what is a local residential street and a lot of vocabulary, that's your, your standard subdivision street that is not collecting a bunch of houses, but it's serving homes or, or other small scale access, it's a thirty-one foot street with curb and gutter and it handles about up to a thousand trips per day.
And back of curb to back of curb, just as a reminder, means essentially it's the pavement width. It doesn't count any sidewalk or trail or landscape, it's just what's between the curbs is the, is what that refers to.
Back of curb on this side to back of curb on that side. So that also kind of, that gives you an indication, those curbs are two feet apiece. So if you take four feet off of that number, you end up at twenty-seven feet of asphalt pavement between the curves.
So one foot, one foot off to the six and six that you can actually park on.
Right, right, because the, the gutter's accessible, not really easy to drive in, but all right. What the, what section, we have this section in our, our mobility master plan. It is not what we would see as a typical street rural local section. It's really something that we can use, somebody was trying to capture a specific character and they said they wanted some, some larger scale lots and they wanted to feel more like a country living style. So that's going to be a road that doesn't have a raised curb and gutter on the outside. Most newer, newer, newer rural local streets are going to have some form of edge protection. So that's typically a, a concrete driven curb on either side. And then again, it's just, it's flat and level with the surface, but it's used to help kind of hold that asphalt in together.
That's like the ranch, was mostly that, mostly that.
This is appropriate for lower density residential development. So if you've got, if you've got really large lots like you would find in the country or in a rural setting, then you might have this. But this, this is not what you would typically see for higher density, traditional single family or in this case, a pretty high density town home development. This is not what you would typically see, it's for larger lots that are more rural in nature.
And then again, just, just as a reference, what Split B is today, does, doesn't even meet that standard, right? It's, it's still smaller than what that standard is, it's four foot narrower. And again, no edge protection on it and it's what, what we commonly call a county road section. So what, what challenge are we dealing with today? Start just kind of by talking about the, the current state of Split B Road is really not designed to accommodate intense traffic or neighborhood traffic or, or anything more than the occasional passageway. I spent some time out there earlier this week and taking some pictures and kind of hanging out. And I think I was there thirty, forty-five minutes or so and I saw one car and about five people walking a dog. So it, it's not, it's not really designed or prepared to handle large scale traffic. The road that, there's a picture on the right-hand side there, this is a, a Bell County road that had a subdivision built just downstream from this point. And it was around ninety lots for, for that subdivision. And what you see is the, the result of the increased traffic on these county road sections that really aren't prepared to deal with large volumes. You end up with something that, in this case, there's every about, about every other month and they're having to come in and you see all these little pots, it's just a stuff with some asphalt back of it and trying to tan it down and deep it from being a rumble strip. Still a relatively rough roadway section though, but this, I included that to kind of give you the idea of how, how these types of roads start to deteriorate when you really put traffic volume off them. When we talk about traffic numbers, so we, we look at adjacent surrounding developments. You recall, we had, North Gate Phase Five was one of the, the developments that's already platted and exists today. There's some commercial tracks that are platted that have runage on Split B Road. You have North Ridge Town Homes and it may or may not be called that. Ultimately, Josh is still working through his, his development process for that. But essentially, if you take what was that North Ridge Town Homes development and that's versions of that kind of duplicated to the south of that, that parcel, a similar nature of development. But it, it's got somewhere between a hundred and fifty on the, the bottom end. And then the zoning ordinance allows up to two hundred lots with the acreages there. And if you look at the, the build out, what's anticipated for the traffic volume generated by just the townhomes portion of it, depending on which estimate you use, we're somewhere between just over a thousand or just under nineteen hundred trips per day. It would be associated with just the residential component of, of that subdivision. When you, you add in the neighborhood service build out, which this, this portion of it will likely have some access to PeriView. So when you look at these, these numbers here, those are, are less likely to be one hundred percent Split B access and some of that will flow onto PeriView in that location. And you can anticipate, depending on what goes there, somewhere between another five hundred cars per day and fifteen hundred on the top end.
Would you, would you go back one, I think? What, what is the, the road currently designed for? So. Or, or could?
Less than this, so you know, from a, a science book standpoint.
Yeah.
It's listed at, at six hundred, again, that six hundred number is really intended for something that's got a, a little bit wider width. And then the pavement section would look a little bit differently if it were designed from scratch today, so.
It was built when that area was in the county.
Sure.
So it was not built to any city standard, so it was annexed in, so it wouldn't, today it wouldn't meet any city standard. But the closest one would be that eighty to six hundred trips per day.
There's, there's some additional information, if you look through what FHWA has posted, they usually use four hundred. Is that number, is that top number for theirs? Our number was a little bit more generous of the purposes of this conversation, I used our adopted mobility master plan number. But realistically, somewhere between six and, that road starts to cap out on the number of cars it can handle on any given day.
And we're really, in this assessment, we're just really going off of width, because we don't know what the pavement, or actually how it was built, so.
Yeah.
That, which, which is the, you know, certainly. So that which, which is the, you know, certainly the width of it is, is an, a concern. But all, obviously another big concern is just, we don't know what the structural foundation of the road is. And so you would anticipate that higher volumes is going to deteriorate the road fairly quickly.
And the way most county roads originated, they started likely as a, a gravel road. They got a little bit of oil and, and rock mixed, but on top of that, it turns to asphalt. And then the county had some period where they would, they would do a chip seal on it year over year. So it gets a little bit thicker every time. Uh, and so depending on how many rounds of chip seal it's added, you know, that, that thickness later starts to increase a little bit. But uh not measurably enough to really move the needle on this. When we look at uh Northgate Phase Five, there's about five point seven acres. That uh take access either partially or wholly from Split B. Uh, if you look at the, the, take out the sections that take partial access. So again, if you recall back in this slide, so we're really talking about these three lots. You can see the lot on the north end has primary frontage on North P Ridge. So it has good access to be able to get on the North P Ridge. You talk about the lot on the corner down here has some primary access onto Prairie View Road as well. And uh, so you could anticipate something that's developed on this corner or this corner is, is likely to have a, a dual access. But whatever is developed on this middle lot here is sole access is Split B Road.
Which one is, is Northgate, Northbank?
So Northgate is the whole subdivision. Northgate Phase Five is this, this whole subdivision. And, and Northbury. North Ridge is located right up here.
Yeah.
And then uh the other development is this, this property that's adjacent here on the other side of Split B. So when you try to, when you start to break that out then and look at the middle lot versus those two end lots. We can expect somewhere between one seventy five and six hundred on that, that middle lot for trips per day. And then somewhere between three twenty five and twelve hundred on those two end lots. Your, your higher traffic areas are likely to be those hard corners. And, and that lot in the middle is likely to be more of a, a destination thing, you know, donut shop type. And developing here. Um, so what this presents us with is we have a road development that's ready to refer a road that is not to a standard. So that road needs to be designed and constructed to a standard that's going to, going to hold up and stand the test of time. If we were to take the, the section of Split B that was constructed with the construction of P Ridge, North P Ridge Road. It's a thirty one foot back to curb to back to curb. So it's, it's typical to more of a, a local residential street. Given the right of way that's there today and given the uh, the road section and the number of properties that would take access. If we were to take that thirty one foot back curb to back curb and just put that all the way down and, and uh rebuild Split B to that. That standard, you're going to see somewhere around a hundred thousand in design, somewhere around just shy of a million in construction. So it's, it's a little over a million dollars in estimated cost. There's a couple of wild cards with this and there, there's a water line that would likely need to be relocated in there. And there is uh the, the drainage for that roadway could be, could be significant, maybe not so significant. So we have some, I, I feel comfortable that this is probably on the higher end of that construction cost. But I don't think it goes a lot lower. Uh, you know, we're not going to see it pay fifty percent of that.
That's a city project, we're like, not, not letting the developer do it and it will be cheaper.
Developer could do it for cheaper. Yeah. Uh, and then. Again, likely you could see some cost savings on that as you get the design done and you kind of get into exactly what the project is. It's, it's likely to come in under that number, but I, you know, standing here in front of you today. I wouldn't go much less than seven fifty, eight hundred thousand as it is here today right now. So what we're talking about really is a roughly million dollar price tag for a road that uh something needs to be done with. Because if we do nothing, then it's going to be a problem. It'll be more expensive.
What's the overall length? Just guessing, is that it? Uh, or you got middle road there?
Yeah, it is uh. Just under a thousand feet.
Okay. So a fifth roughly of a.
Point one seven six miles from where the asphalt, the curb is on the north side.
That's what?
Thousand or. Point one seven six miles from where the curb stops on the top to where the curb is on the bottom.
Yeah.
A little less than a quarter.
Yeah.
There's, there's a couple hundred foot and then redid North P Ridge. There's a couple hundred foot on the north side that's already been done.
And I'm, I'm measuring starting at the bottom of that, Josh.
Okay, so this was, this road was annexed in at some point. In that present condition or a little better, it's deteriorated over time.
Right.
With the annexation process, um the city, is the city obligated? Now that it's in the city limits to um bring it up to standard in any way?
No, we're, we're, i- if it's functioning under its current intent. So it's functioning at a level where the traffic is such on that roadway that it. Doesn't deteriorate, doesn't get worse, it still serves its purpose. Then we would not have an immediate need or requirement to upgrade that road. And what we did do was we elected to say, that's not the ultimate alignment. You'll recall it used to come up and you had to hang a left and go down Prairie View and then you would hang a right and continue on P Ridge. So what we did do was elect to realign that roadway. And, and, and have P Ridge be a continuous street rather than a hard nine, hard nine. Uh, right.
So then what happens to Split P if that, it stays just like it is? It just sits there?
That's the question. And if you, and if, and if development doesn't occur, then if, it's fine. But the question is, when development occurs on it, do you, do you, do you want to allow the development to occur? And then have the city come back later, either now or later and deal with what we will know will be then a substandard road? Or do you want to require it to be addressed at the time of development? That, that's the question on the table right now.
So I think, I think then the next question is then who is then required? Is it a city job? Is it a city uh rebuild? Because of development or is it the developer rebuild?
That's.
That what, what's standard?
It, it has been done and we've done it in ways where the developer has reconstructed that. And I'm talking about over the years so that, that target hasn't always been one hundred percent. This is how it's always been, right? So over the years, we've done it in a manner where uh the city has constructed a road. We've done it in a manner where the developer has constructed a road. And we've done it in a manner where there's been some kind of joint participation agreement, repair proportion, developer pays for the portion. And uh it, it is done that way.
We're usually involved in roads that are certainly arterial and above. Collector and above is, is common. Again, we built the collector, which is south, which is North P Ridge. Now this is a local street. And so typically that would be carried by the development. Um, but it is a perimeter street, meaning it's not within the boundaries of the development. Uh, many cities charge perimeter street fees to address, you know, uh the impact of a development on. Which is different than an impact fee, but essentially it's, you would, uh, you would charge a developer. Um, a proportionate share of the uh need to address the street. On the perimeter of their development. We used to do that. Uh, we don't do that anymore. Council eliminated that many years ago. I don't remember when. Um, I think Melton still charges perimeter street fees. So right now, we, we don't really have a mechanism to address. You either allow the plat to go forward and, and it defer the decision to later. Or you deal with it at the plat. Um, but we, we don't otherwise have really a mechanism to address local infrastructure. That's impacted by um nearby adjacent, but not development that's occurring. That the infrastructure that is being built inside the boundaries of the development.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a little bit?
Not right now.
So in, in this slide, what I'm not trying to suggest in any priority order, any of these things. What I'm, what I'm hoping to do with this slide is kind of walk you through as we evaluate any case. You know, there's, there's only a limited number of options you can choose from. So again, these are not in priority orders. So do nothing is not.
I see your point.
But uh, it is an option, right? So you, you have that option to say, you know what? It's not a problem right now. Uh, it might be a problem in the future. Let's do nothing and, and see what happens, right? At that point though, we, we all know that at some point the road deteriorates. If it comes to traffic hazard and you have to do something with it.
That road right now, its present condition would get complaints.
Correct. Absolute.
And, 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 and we anticipate we're about to get a plat for the town home development. Which is uh, which is Mr. Welch's project. And we will need to evaluate whether we allow, what, what staff will do with that plat. Whether we will say that uh the, that entrances and exits onto that development are allowed on this road. Or this road is not in a safe condition and it, and it cannot be allowed going forward without the developer addressing the road condition. And because we don't really have a standard, again, we don't have a practice, a consistent practice or a fee set to address the, these. We really need guidance from council on whether we're going to say, you can, you can uh. You can take access for this development off of Split P and we will take on the responsibility either now or later. Or you will not allow the access onto Split P because it's not in a condition that would handle that. Um, that level of development at this time. That, that's what we need direction on.
Yes. So that, that top, I don't know, it's basically we put our blinders on and you just keep moving and hope it works out or becomes something else. Not a great option. The second one there is basically, uh, you think of this as a dial. And on one end you have developer responsibility and on the other end, you know, city responsibility. So if you dial that all the way to the developer side and you say, this is a development responsibility, you're generating traffic. It's going to go on this road. It has to be dealt with. Come up with a plan to deal with the road. And that's what the, the second listing there is. Third listing then is you take that same dial. Slide it all the way to the other side and say it's not, not your responsibility as a developer. The city will take that project on. Uh, and, and we'll move something forward and together we can get this done. Uh, some of the concern with that is that it, it is not in a capital plan anywhere as it exists today. We've already identified that it, it would require funding and that funding is not there. So we would either have to come up with more funding or take away from some other project. That is, is planned to be done to, to get to that bottom of course. You start to try to get creative then at that point. You say, okay, well, what if we were to, to take out a section of that roadway in the middle? And just get rid of it and you leave some access to Prairie View and some access to B Ridge. And you have two short sections of a road and uh it's a split, split B road at that point, I guess. Uh, but a, again, you still have a funding challenge, right? It's a, a lesser funding challenge, but you still have a funding challenge at that point. Uh, and, and it doesn't, doesn't necessarily address what would be ideal for the situation. It's just a, a way to solve that problem. Uh, the, the bottom one there is an attempt to negotiate cost share where we try to take that dial. And we find what the appropriate point is between developer and city. And uh we pay for a portion of that, developer pays for a portion of that. Uh, again, funding is still not identified, so we don't clear that hurdle yet. But uh those bottom two really start to, to get into the short of the city doing it completely. Uh, or the developer doing it completely. How do you, how do you try to manage that process? So we're, we're at a fork in the road and we could use a little bit of guidance on what, what council perspective is on that. I do have, if you talk about abandonment of a portion of a road, the, the section that's highlighted in red there. And we, we have to maintain access to this lot, this plat. Uh, either through, you could abandon the whole thing and give them some kind of a private access out to, to Prairie View. Or you could abandon a section where you leave access up to that, that lot. And uh then kill the access in between. Uh, so.
David, I, I, I don't want to cut your presentation. Yeah, but I spoke with um Mr. Welch a little bit every day on the phone and have. A potential kind of a hybrid idea, but it needs, need lots of direction from planning and probably legal both.
I'm going ahead and click this one. It's got a good area.
What, what would it take to be able to move, take a little bit of redoing this road, to move the road in? Into the development, have the developer build that part and do some trading of this right of way where he can have lots on this side. Then it's just part of the development and he would probably be willing to pay for all of that, no problem. And then temporarily come down and run it, he lose a little bit and get it back later, but run it back down into here until we get this part. Is that, any kind of an idea?
Mike, is that just going around the worst part? I mean, David talked about, you know, kind of abandoning the middle. Is this, is that?
It would be a temporary thing in my opinion. You would, when, when this land ever got developed, you would want to have some kind of provision to be able to. Either rebuild this then or cut it through here and do some trade with this landowner as well. Not been real thought, well thought out, but am I making sense with what I'm saying to everybody there?
Well, my question was going to be, are you basically, if you're talking about doing something temporary, is that just in an effort to sort of. Literally have a workaround on the worst section of that road? What, what's, what's the point of?
I don't know that's the worst section, I guess. Because then the developer would just build it because it's just one of his internal streets. He gets lots running both sides. Or I know you try lots on both sides, but it's an internal street to his development. He's going to pay for all of it. That costs city anything for that section.
So then it becomes a question of when?
Um, well, that part I would assume he would do when he's developing his, he would have to have another. We'd have to lap that again, but uh.
I think a handful of things just in, it, it's. It's definitely an option that we need to, we need to continue to chase out. But the, you know, the hurdles to jump.
Cause I know there's a lot, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Right, hurdles jump right off the top of my head. We still have to, to deal with access here, which we're presuming is the.
Yeah, we'd have, we'd have to make videos probably for the developer to, to speed over to there or something.
Right, we would, we would need to deal with that access. This corner that's left here is the, really the neighborhood services portion of that something. And so it, it could potentially create a uh, a challenging parcel. To, to get again from, say you get this road to here, you still got to get either back to here.
Hmm.
Or through to uh, to get a Prairie View one way or the other. So we would need to, need to figure out what that looks like and how you, you get from A to B. Uh, to make sure that that, that plan is workable. Um. But in general, it, it's really just taking this section of road.
Moving it over.
And moving it over a little bit, which. Doesn't give me extreme heartburn initially, other than there's a couple of points that we just, we have to be able to work out before we can.
And some of it may need to be worked out with the landowner in the south. There's the, what?
You're not going to do that piece though, then you're, you're kind of back to at least partially option one, which is defer it or do nothing. So you're still, you, you would still be making a decision that if not now, later, someone. The city is going to have to come back and deal with that. If I understand, I'm, I'm a little long, so maybe I.
Maybe, and maybe the southern developer does it in exchange for. In exchange for, we give him the old right away and he builds the street to his too, and gets some property on their side of the street.
That that was a common plan of development, that that development is this development, though, it was all done as a common zoning case, it was.
But it's a different owner, right?
Yeah, do we have the same owner on both sides of the road?
So originally, this came in as a single zoning case, this half of the road. This half of the road and this half of the road are not the same.
Okay.
But if you were only gonna address the condition of the road to here, you still have this that has to be all professioned.
That's not fun.
So it it is kind of back to the first, because you would, you and just keep. Uh, I can't reach, David, maybe again, that's the, that's the density of development we're talking about, a little bit less. This is your standard fairly dense neighborhood development, so just keep keep that scale with that scale, so this is a lot of density. It would still be coming out on this road, so you would still have the road condition to deal with down here. If you did, if you realigned the top part into the development, that would take care of the top part, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
But not, not dealing with this part?
Well, you could, if if we were to temporarily. Not have them connect, does the develop, is the development that's gonna go on the top up there, does that require? Three entrances or is two enough or?
Hundred and fifty-one and above is three.
Nice developer question, cause I don't remember how many are there.
Yeah, I think this is a good time to.
You just have some of these answers, I know.
Don't tell us, Josh, just tell us.
So whether we do the project or not, and I'll just tell you from being out there, because when the school's in session and watching the traffic in the morning and in the evenings. This road's already catching quite a bit of traffic, because there's a lot of people sitting going down North P Ridge. They cut through here to go to three seventeen and bypass school traffic, especially around school times. So the issue's there, whether we do it or not. Uh, Mr. Song's here, he's the current owner of the property. Um, what we've been working on is, we're trying to put in the town home project. And he's wanting to keep the corner down there, the general or the the neighborhood services, retail part of the property. Uh, so one of the questions and one of the things I've talked about and looked at and might have brought up. Is once you get over that hundred and fifty lots, if we're right from one block. Um, is if we didn't have over a hundred and fifty, then you could only have two entrances, well, so potentially with the townhomes. You could tie in here, where there's already that road coming off, we can tie in here and tie in there. Um, and then there's the two entrances with townhomes and we're fine.
You have to count the development up there, though, Josh, if you're tying into another local street, you have to count your townhomes. You would have to count that, it would have to be a hundred and fifty, including your first base.
That was something I thought about.
Including Josh's thing there that you just pointed out.
If he's gonna use that as the exit, he has to count those lots and pay under a hundred and fifty, including those lots.
Gotcha, so that was just something I thought about in short term, um, if. You get the townhome project moving, if we just did that, um, maybe get a variance, just use those two tie-ins, cause then you're taking. You're taking all the residential traffic out to a brand new collector room, sitting right there, so then all the crap will out to a brand new collector rather than. On the older street, um, regardless of what happens. With the townhomes and like David, you did a good job mentioning this, like this section of the road. Um, then the problem still is long term, is what happens with that. Uh, cause essentially you've got two different property owners on both sides, and then. Who pays for what, or how they split it, or how do you figure on that getting done and that gets, that gets messy. There's not a real, I don't have a real advantage for that one. Um, then you can see in this picture, the front section here, um, that was already built when this was re-aligned. Um, so that's already, she got a couple hundred foot of it, it's already there, so that's just the situation we're in, um. David and I have had, have had several conversations, uh, going back and forth and just trying to come up with some ideas. Um, I'm aware some of the budget conversations have been gone recently. So we're just here to ask for uh, input guidance, um, what y'all might like to see and what we can do to work it best together.
I think what I'm saying would work long term, that it leaves us, sure, 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 so.
Um, and and I will tell you this, on the the townhome side of it. Um, we're not in a, in a huge rush, we'd like to get some plats and things going, I think right now about half the buildings are still rebuilt. That's on the first section that they're on the north end, and builders not want to start anything here until they get the rest of those built out and. Um, finished, so as far as the construction process and getting the actual construction process going. And we're not in a huge rush, we'd like to get some of the plats and plans together. Um, be able to get our section of property purchased from Mr. Song, so that's what's kind of put the. Um, trying to get this figured out now versus waiting another six months.
Yeah.
So we can figure out exactly what we're gonna buy from townhomes, what Mr. Song's gonna have, provided on the corners, if he can market his property. But I don't think there's a big rush right now for any type of construction activity.
Yeah.
I think that, so the other thing that we didn't talk about on this slide, but it's just, when you look at the traffic rates. If you you compare. Kind of lowest on one end and highest on the other, both directions, somewhere between sixty-five percent and ninety percent of traffic. It's gonna be generated, that we'll be accessing this road is coming out of of the townhome portion of the development. You add in some additional uh, neighborhood services there, and when you look at the the common plan of development over here. Um, it, it's a significant amount of traffic that with or without. Any other development that it's more than that road can handle today. So we we do need to get this addressed with the development of the townhomes, we'll need to have a solution that's gonna serve this thing long term. Because we. We really need to to figure out how it's gonna be served, what it's gonna look like. When you add in these additional, I forget how many lots you got up here, Josh, but it's. Uh, it's not a few, roughly, I think so, yeah. So you, if you say you stick at that hundred and fifty mark still, but you add those sixteen in, you're you're then it uh, two tens. Or for this. Common, you know, where it's a base development at that point. And we'll just share, there's the one other concern I did have, is because you've got. The two or three subdivisions, also the north. And if you, if you put, if you put this run, you know, you tie it back into the neighborhood and it comes back out here so much way or another. The one concern I did have, but all those other neighborhoods with north of us, there's already a lot of those people, like I mentioned. Not for her to go to three seventeen and get more school traffic, cause then you're putting all of those people and those other neighborhoods cut through here. And cut through residential neighborhood doing that, so that was just something about this traffic, you safely would, you know, everyone will apologize around. You know, you don't ever want to cut through traffic going to the neighborhood. As much as you can help it. And and with the density, there's always, there there's already gonna be a lot of. Part, part is not the best word for it, but you know, parking's gonna be largely off-street in this subdivision, but. When you think about this uh, standard, say, trash day out there, you've got two cans for each townhome. They're on the street and uh. Everything else that's happening on that street, that's already gonna be eliminated, throttled down, so that would be my only other concern, but. Round it into the neighborhoods with creating a lot of driveway conflict, with creating a lot of.
If it if.
A lot of conflict on the street, it's already got a whole lot happening on it. And I think you're gonna generate a lot of complaint from.
Running lots on it here, exactly, whatever.
Right.
So the development of this road, however it's paid for, will serve that neighborhood?
Yes.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes, at least, I mean, you see some rough. Rough proportionality is the term that, you know, Brandon was talking about, perimeter, perimeter street fees, it's that's the term that you typically have to apply when you talk about. Perimeter street fees, a rough proportionality, so what is the rough proportionality that? This development affects the. So somewhere between sixty-five and ninety percent.
And the other part is what's on the other side, it's not, it's not the broader area, really. Because North P Ridge is your collector.
Right.
But if we're talking about the potential of just abandoning that road, which I know has been a lot of the talk. We gotta ban it to somebody, so if we can, if we abandon it to Josh and make it an inner street. And enter to the subdivision, then nobody else is gonna really come and do it like they did now.
But is it really, is it internal to the project, if the land to the west is not owned? By the developer? I mean, I guess that's, I mean, I understand what you're, where you're trying to get, but it doesn't, to me, that doesn't seem like it's an internal free.
You have one lot that has to take access off of split P on the other, this, not, not Josh's side, the other side.
Yeah.
Is it possible for you to send something and you build up there? Like people? I got something on here.
I can pass it around on my phone. Why do you, because essentially, like this section of road. If there was, like, if the commercials, like, for example, if this was already here, this was already here, you already had a road there. That I can tie in here, we can tie in here, we can tie in there, that section of road isn't necessarily necessitated, if that makes sense. But then you gotta deal with potential traffic from the neighborhoods in the north, cutting through the neighborhood to get there and miss the school traffic we have three seventeen. That's the only issue with that. So what's overall best for the whole area, city, that's what we're gonna ask y'all, which I'm. It was an easy one, we wouldn't be here.
What'd you call it, David, something? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the green box, rough proportionality.
Uh, I, I think if I can get this up there, I may help answer, it may help answer some question. I think there's a way to make it all.
You gotta email it to someone.
I just sent, what, you sent me this screenshot.
Though it still doesn't address the three entrances, if you put it that way, though. Because your, your third entrance is dependent on extending that road the rest of the way.
It would be, he would have, he would before he got.
Yeah, it would, it would, it would depend then on these tracks developing to eventually get that third entrance. But you'd have the right away and you'd have it there, for when those do develop, then you got the third.
So they have to be done and bases to where including those already, rougher townhomes, you could do over a hundred and fifty. Or until you had the third.
You could get a variance. Or come or or put it in the P D or something, that we'll provide it and then it'll be connected. You know, because of the P D includes the entire property, both the. Both all the residential and the neighbor, neighborhood service stuff here, so you could put it, cause it sits and includes the whole thing, you could, you could put it as a condition in the P D. That when the general retail develops, it connects that.
Oh, I wouldn't want a hundred and fifty without having three already, I think, something, but precedent we've already set. And that's probably may need some more.
Yeah.
Close, close.
And we don't have to have.
Three or four pieces in today. Talking to bring something back, yeah.
Yeah. Cause we could break this out and what maybe the seventh committee or you, whoever, yeah, get some more staff input.
Ultimately, we need a body to not, you know, that, and that's, that's part of why. I wanted this on the agenda is because I think there's gonna be individual opinions, but that's not, and I understand, that's not particularly helpful to me, I need what the body wants to do.
Which is why I wanna back show this, that we're.
So this is uh, this is north. This is the adjacent uh, townhome development up to the north of us. Uh, this is the new realignment of north, uh, or uh, North P Ridge. And so potentially, if you realign this, I mean, this somehow or another was to come through, you've got connection up there. Connection out here to a collector, there's two, and then this would eventually tie in somewhere, you know, this location there. Into that either commercial or back into. Back there somewhere.
If that, if that didn't have counting the current townhomes already flooded, if that was more than a hundred and fifty before we had that third exit.
Before that ordinance is passed.
I'm, I'm, hey, I'm, I don't wanna put two hundred homes there and only still have the two as a variance, I would want. The third one before we had over the hundred and fifty.
And then the issue was, we've had the timing of that, that where your third access doesn't tie into a road, that is up to a standard. Right, so it doesn't count.
We would still have to, staff would still have to be making a judgment call that that, that entrance onto split P. Even if it's the entrance is touching, no, the 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 one to the north, even if that is going to only. Only hit the improved section. The other side, if we don't close it, the other side is still an unimproved section, so we would have to be making the judgment call. That that, the, the road that allowing an entrance there is safe. To, and the road is able to support it. Um, and so we, we would just wanna make sure y'all were okay with that entrance coming out on an, on the road. As it is. Unless we're gonna close it to the, to the south of that point.
This piece, right, we would, under this, we would, we would. At least to here initially. Now, what we're still left with is that this project is still hanging out there and we're.
But if that's all one, I know it's two owners, a ten, right, that's one, but it will be two, but if it's one plat, then we can make the condition that. The road gets built all the way through by the developers.
You could, there you build this, this barrier that guy. Yeah.
Okay, alright. We can sit here and talk about this all day.
No, I, I, I agree, it needs some smaller, but, yeah.
Um, David, if you kind of wanna figure out what we're, we wanna get together over the next couple of weeks and have a couple of technical meetings and. See what we can come up with, I'm more than happy to do that.
I don't, I don't feel like we have enough direction yet on kind of what, what y'all are wanting to accomplish, you wanna. If if, if you could give a little bit more direction for us.
Well, and I think that's my question, I know how I feel about it. Um, are you wanting council direction today?
We don't have to have, have council direction today, but I. I just wanna make sure that as we, we continue to work with Josh, we, we have an idea where you're wanting us to get to.
And for, for me in particular, it would be helpful. I feel like we're, we're, you know, it's a little less than halfway there at that point, so. We can chase this rabbit, right? But we still are gonna be back to the same conversation on this piece of revenue.
And that's, that's my concern, is that since we don't have common land, you know, ownership up and down the length of that road. Um, that this, I think this over time could become a mess, I think over time this comes back to council at least once, maybe two more times. Without blockading it with uh, big limestone blocks, rather putting a curb in, that road's gonna be used.
Right.
And it's gonna continue to deteriorate, continue to be complaints, council, continue to get calls about it, or. My estimation, we can nip it in the bud and require that um, that the developer develop that road. That's my thought. That's a, that's a, that, that's, to me, Josh, that's one of those things where you have a, you you've already had a couple of big projects out there. This is another one, um, that, that area is gaining momentum, and based upon the projects that are out there now, they're identity projects. Which, you know, just continues to up the traffic count. And um. Uh, you know, I, I, I hope something like the pencils out, but at some point, you gotta, we gotta be done with that.
In a, in a tight, in a tight meeting, I'll, I'll just tell y'all, if we have to go pay or do that. If we have to go pay to do that whole road.
Doesn't pencil out.
We're not, we're not part of this project.
Okay.
And then we still have the same wrong.
Yeah, we still have people using the road going right now.
Why, why couldn't that road abandoned? A long time ago.
Well, was it?
Why wasn't it when the new road was built?
It, it probably should have been, but, uh, we've let that lot get platted. Um, because I, I, I believe that the lot got platted right in the middle of the, the process. So, um. It's, you know, it's not ideal, but it's, uh, you, you, you need to keep access to that lot because that's a platted lot. Um, but, you know, what I've told David, and again, why we're here, is that we just, we, we have to. Make sure that before we continue down this road, that we're, we're, um. We're just, uh, making good choices and so that, that is one commercial lot. This is, this is a lot of, uh, density and so it's, it's, it's. It's definitely going to tip the scales of whether you need, uh, improve that. If you, if you continue to have that as a city street and you don't abandon it, at least the portion you can abandon. Uh, and still serve the, the lot that's platted and you let future lots be platted on it. Then from my perspective, we, we just need to be upfront that this is an issue. And we need to know how we wanna handle the issue before we just keep letting lots get platted on it. And it's unfortunate that a lot got platted on it, um, but that's, we, we have that situation. So because of that, do we wanna continue, uh, to? I mean, but say we had abandoned it. Then if Josh wanted to develop here, he would have, he would have to figure out how to get to north, north P Ridge. So, um, it doesn't. Um. From, from that standpoint, it doesn't change his challenge of how does he get a piece of property developed and make connections to. Uh, appropriate roads. It just makes it, the, the question is, is, is split P in the mix for him? And, and making those decisions or if we rewind and abandon it when we should have. You know, would, he, he would be facing the same challenge of how do I get, you know, to, to North P Ridge? So, uh, but, but there is, uh, split P is there and it is an option. If that's what we want to, to continue.
I do love, I love a good shortcut. And I would be one of the ones taking that every time to get away from this whole traffic, so.
And hypothetically, I get the property on the other side of this town here, which is one big piece. That was not platted, there's multiple lots. Then essentially, you just pull a road up through the commercial, come up here and tie it right there and. We're fine, but, you know, but since there's a lot over here, what do you do with that too?
Okay.
Yeah, I hate to say it, but I, I agree with Mayor, I think. We need to do it now.
Do what now?
We need, we need the road rebuilt now. And the developer needs to do it. And I know it's, that's hard to do and I hate to say that.
But he's not gonna do the development and the road's still gonna be there being used as a shortcut that we have to do something with or abandon.
Yeah.
Yeah, but. I'm not interested in making bucks.
Oh, I'm, I'm not either, what I'm saying is, if we can work something with the developer to have them help pay pretty much of it. We're gonna have to do something with it or abandon it, we still gotta get people that know the lot. City's gonna have the expense for the, Josh leaves it alone, that's the cow pasture, whatever. The city's gonna have the expense someday, we already have a plated lot in the middle of it, we gotta keep it a road and it's getting used by other people right now.
I'm speaking with, how many, how many more of these? So it's frustrating, Brent, to, why do not ideal projects like this have frustration that these come up? This is something that should have been caught and managed earlier. So that's, that's a piece. But, um. In the short term, you know, to, to take care of this project now. And I'm, Josh, not putting you on the spot, but to Carl's point. And to your point. You shouldn't have said it, now I'm gonna use my.
I understand.
We, this, this budget, this, this budget project, th- this has been a booger. And so whenever Carl says, uh, Carl is echoing the sentiments of every council member saying, I don't wanna spend a million bucks. Um, so.
And, and that's why I was trying to come up with maybe this.
I understand. The point I'm trying to make is that. Um, we have a problem now, I acknowledge that problem, Mike, thank you for that. Uh, you, you're welcome, thanks for pointing that out, that the city's gonna have to take care of that anyway. But, um, if, if we're gonna take care of this problem now. And the, the developer says this doesn't pencil out, if they take full responsibility on it. Um. Then I don't mind the city working toward some sort of something that makes sense, but we're not spending a million dollars on the road. So, um, I, I, I know that sounds like I'm, I'm just saying, right, but, you know, I was putting the baby, it's been a di- difficult budget process and, oh, you know what, we might have to. But the, the frustrations that this, this stuff comes up.
Yeah.
You know, and I think about a, uh, modular building that got moved onto a lot. It shouldn't, you know, after there, it's just this. There's just. Part of our friends, it's just crap to keep that comes up. And we, we have to deal with it, this is another we have to deal with.
Yeah, and I'm, so. And that's actually what I'm saying, the problem already got created is there. If we can find a way to have the developer help us to fix the problem, then we have to.
Or we, yeah, then.
So maybe I meant to understand and so let me, let me ask, um, a question. It's probably to Josh, uh, maybe to David, but let's say that there, there, there wasn't a lot there and we had abandoned split P. What? You would have to build a road to access this property, so what's the difference?
So then, commercial, commercial track. They've got soldiers in that road, it's their roads. I get to tie into it. But I've got my two other connections up there. So, we're fine.
Hey, can we go back to the other image?
Trying to do this, so. In that case, then why, why couldn't we just put a sub out to that? Lot in the middle. Now you're developing, you can build the road the same way and we can still get rid of.
If you were gonna.
Because then why would I, I would mean to go, spend money to build that road and then give somebody else access to it, that's not a pain.
Uh, it, I, again, I, I'm, to go back to Mayor's point, if the frustration is why is this a problem? It, that split P should have been gone, then great, let's, let's, let's remove split, split P, Josh has to pay for a road. I, I, I think I'm confused.
So we gotta get them to the other box.
We can still give, I mean, this, they, they can have access through a, a private. You know, if we abandon a portion of this.
Just make it a, a, an accessment.
Just find a way to get it to this property.
Then we can go back to what we were saying, Josh can build the road through his and tie to that. Same thing, right?
Well, it would be a private, that would be, become a private drive, it's access for this. And then if the times that this track develops, then they've got to deal with the private drive. And make it however wide they need it, you know, if it gets one foot and some block on, so they're gonna go one six or thirty. And, uh, they can't, it all, it was, was, was there either.
And that loss was a problem. Think.
What, my?
That, that lot in the middle there, that's, is what's the problem, is we gotta somehow allow them access to, to give them flat. They were.
I don't know.
I think, I think one thing too. Mayor, on, on the point about why you're seeing more of this, uh. Uh, as well, I think it, it is important to. The easy stuff to develop is no longer there. We've reached a point where we're starting to get into more of the things that, you know, ten years ago, Josh probably wouldn't have looked at this property. He said, no, too many, too many hurdles, and go get some easy stuff over here, we're gonna do that easy stuff. But we're starting to reach that point where the easy pickings have, have come off the table.
Yeah, I get it.
We're, what we're left with is projects that are much more challenging.
But it's not necessarily, David, the re- city's responsibility to fix all these challenges. In my opinion. The professional planners may feel differently. Um, you know, we have another issue going on around extending a, a water line way out. Possibly. And my answer to that is maybe, maybe it's just not the time for this project. Right? Maybe that, I mean, ten years ago, it sure wasn't. Now it's questionable, five or ten years later, it might be, th- there's no problem, we, we, you know, to, to develop that piece of land, we won't spend a million bucks. Now it just may not be the time for it. I don't think, I don't, um. Carl and I. Don't think that we have the appetite, I don't have the appetite for it right now.
No, I don't have the appetite to spend the money. I was, I'm, I'm grabbing at straws out of the way to let the developers spend their money and fix our problems. Is where I'm trying to get. I'm not saying the city's spending much money, I'm trying to figure out another way where we don't have to.
Well, so you can do private drive.
Willing to do that, if he was gonna put in a road, but he not willing to let that, that lot take access off of it. Is that what you're saying, Josh? You otherwise would have built the road if split P wasn't there. But you're not willing to do it. And let another lot.
If they wanna help pay for it.
So, I mean, I.
I don't know.
If you're, if, if you would, I, I was just trying to, to rewind, if, if split P wasn't there, what would happen? And it sounds like you would build the road.
We would connect down curfew and we'd connect up on the door then.
So then how does that not pencil for you to build the road? In this circumstance?
I'm just saying, I don't like putting in infrastructure for other people to use it, where I can't monetize it. For a developer that doesn't make any sense.
I think part of it too, that would make more sense.
To the point of not doing the development?
It would make more, it would make more sense for you if you could get the old road right of way to put some more lot on and move the lot interior. Is that what?
And as long as.
And leaving access to that lot, I mean, leave one lot out and get access.
That would be fine.
I can bet you, I have looked at it, because we've been debating on how to keep access to the lot. That's another way of thinking, by the way, we could take, we could take a look at it.
That's what I'm saying, the same thing y'all two are saying, I don't wanna spend the money either, I wanna figure out a way for the developers to spend the money and we get the road.
Well, let me ask you this.
It's in the place to bar.
I'm just thinking like, oh, yeah. I don't know if they're gonna like this, but we connect here, we connect up there. The commercial right here has access to curfew. And we just take all this out, they have, I don't know.
It would, we're, we're just, we're just, we're talking in circle, we're just talking in circles now. Um, I think that.
I'd have to go wait out and see how that works.
Yeah, and that may be what's next, because right now, I think direction, I'm not trying to be, oh, sorry, I feel like I was. I was a little overbrought there, no, uh, the direction right now that we're giving staff is that we're not spending money on. And so if you can figure out a way to do connecting wherever you want to and do whatever you want to with, whatever you can figure out. Or pencils, for your project.
Yes, that, that's exactly what I'm saying, okay.
So just to, to clarify, what I'm hearing is that, that, and. No steady contribution to the project. However, we need to continue working with the developers to come up with a plan to address access and, uh. Not spend money.
And, uh, and one other clarifying, also not defer a capital, not depending on it today, but also not deferring. Or are we willing to defer?
No, right.
Portion of it.
Yeah, if it doesn't pencil, it doesn't pencil, Josh, and, and, I know you know this, and then use that whether you buy it or not.
Yeah, and Josh has bought it already, so it's not, it's, it's not trying to help out Josh, it's trying to figure out how to get the road built by a developer.
Yeah, so.
And, and the reason we're all here, and I know y'all remember this before we get to. The reason we're all here is because we know there's an existing problem there, whether we do anything. So, is there a way then to help fix this, or what's the priority, what's the guidance then? To see if we can make something work, that also helps alleviate an issue that's already existent.
Is that enough direction?
It's, it's a challenge, but we can, we can work with it, we can, we can.
I'd run out, um, I mean, I think, I know this is frustrating. To not have, but the onus to, to me is on the developer, to make his, to make your project pencil. Alright.
Got it.
Alright, thanks, Josh, good seeing you.
Oh, I do have one other question on here. Uh, just another, now I don't know if this is something I wanna look at, just stick straight to the hundred and fifty lots, that with entrances. Is anything in all code, David, I don't remember. Of doing some type of wider right of ways or improved entrances or divided entrances.
And this is a.
Yeah, that's a, that's a planning. Yeah, that's a planning, you're, uh.
We'll sync up.
Yeah.
Okay, planning, yeah, sound good.
Alright, thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
I thought you were gonna try and sell raffle tickets. I got one more thing.
And another thing. Okay, very good. Yes.
Thank you for us. I'm going.
I'll leave it for you here.
I had a friend one time that was mic'd up, she went into the bathroom, break.
I've heard of that. Oh, no, really?
Yes. It was all ladies.
Yeah. I've heard, I've heard that.
We could have heard that somewhere.
I don't know.
I didn't realize, um, I got lost, I didn't realize that we were, same side of that issue.
Yeah, I don't want to, but we have a problem.
We have. Yeah, no, I don't want to spend.
So going on through this presentation, I'll be looking at. Swallow. As the mayor mentioned, we are seven days a week from the day of the scheduled adoption of the tax rate. Today is the first reading, approving the tax roll and levy taxes and setting the tax rate. As we went over before, processing timelines, the budget tax rate adoption is a combination of state law, truth and taxation, and city charter. The proposed tax rate that we have in the package, like the agenda items, published goes point six nine seven five. Your rate last year was one six two six five. When we filed the budget, seventy-five cents, no new revenue tax rate is point six one four four. And the voter approval tax rate is one eight zero three two. You know, does that look like the super PACs here, the general MNO, the INS? The increase is all the MNO weightness in operation, an increase of seven point five four cents. And the debt is actually a small decrease for the less than half a cent or a total tax rate increase of seven point zero. Like, could I know that? And then we're getting to tonight again, the property tax and roll and the levy. It's the highlight here, we have it. The way to certify well, we got a freeze taxable, we tax everything with this to really invest in zone. But looking at the total adjusted values, we had an increase of percentage wise in the value of eight one five eight percent. Our total adjusted value is ten over ten million, ten million one six nine. The reinvestment zone is one point five six seven billion, there was an increase of fifteen point three five percent. And that, that taxable value, but remember we had a big debate with the vendor one that came back on the tax roll. They added to that, and we net those together, net increase of nine point four four percent. And this ordinance is again, we have a total levy, levy eleven point, or the value, add more on value of eleven point seven three six four two four four one four, eleven point seven fifty. And if you take those rates, the file budget was a seventy-five cents, today we're working with sixty-nine seventy-five total tax levy, when you file it was seventy point nine million. Today we're showing it at sixty-seven point two million dollars. That's a revenue thirty-eight point two million, and that's for MNO, twenty-nine million is from interest and CD fund. And since the file budget, that is decreased by three point seven million dollars. And then the estimated tax levy on the reinvestment zone is ten point nine million, that's the city of temples portion, not the other taxing entities. And from that file budget was just based on a, the estimate we had at the time for the reinvestment zone, it's been adjusted. So in fact, that, we have that, she's got one point five eight, we choose what the, we talk about the levy to be. And the total tax rate as since the following has decreased five point two five cents. And again, this is our calendar, we're going through, and I've over that number five, or those two items. Looking at the tax roll and levy taxes and the setting of the tax rate. Any questions on any of that?
So the, I think I'm just repeating.
Okay.
But sixty-nine seventy-five is about two hundred thousand dollars. Right, sixty-nine ninety-nine to sixty-nine seventy-five. The current budget is, reflects that two hundred dollar, two hundred thousand dollar increase.
Yes, sir.
So tonight, we read in and we, we vote to approve, is that correct, sixty-nine seventy-five?
First reading.
First reading. And then at the final reading, I think that we gave Ms. Myers, that Monday, you say, a pretty clear direction that we wanted to go sixty-nine ninety-nine.
Okay.
Counsel, is that still? I'd like to, are you gonna talk to us about the two hundred thousand?
Of where that was?
Yeah, where?
What did we reduce? There's lots of moving pieces, can you, can you show?
Some else can.
Pull up the schedule?
Yes, yes. You wanna go over all of that?
Yeah, but I, let me, let me move it, really quick and I'll bring your paper.
And will you be going on fifty-two hundred thousand or the whole three millions?
Well, it was really quick to know because we took away the public safety assessment fee, they also took away the park fee.
Yeah.
So, you know, in the end, when I was working.
And that would be on the tax rate.
That was just the tax rate.
That's correct, so. We had a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
So what I'm gonna show you is still a moving part because it was what I worked as of last Friday. So it wasn't based on me taking and changing health insurance rates all the way at this point in time.
Yeah.
So we can have a conversation about what we've done after we changed those last night, or yesterday. And I think it'll give you a bigger picture of seeing what we've done so far at this point in time. If there's other things to take into consideration, we've reevaluated fuel pricing, we reevaluate electricity, we reevaluate all the other operating items within the city. So you're gonna see some of that shown too, as well as our T and L insurance rates. When we transition from having so many positions in the file budget to the proposed budget as of kind of last Friday. We're gonna see that big decrease, so let me transition this all over and we'll go over.
Okay.
And, and to follow up on what Jennifer, kind of of view of that is, we may not be able to say, okay, this is what, this, we didn't do this, this, and this, and it equals two hundred thousand.
Okay, got it.
There was a number we needed to get to.
Yeah.
And all those pieces.
Yeah.
So I can't just pick out one, so still go over the whole, will that help y'all?
Right, sure.
I mean, she's not gonna drill way down, but is that?
Yeah.
And it will be a high level, it will be very high level.
And the cost of so many of our needs, they're, they're almost that same as the loss of the disabled veterans' tax exemptions. I mean, it's interesting how those kind of parallel one another.
Yeah.
With the state of Texas is left us hanging, right?
They're working to do more, even more limitations.
Well, what she's showing us explain that, why we're, why we're down, but we're at the top of it. But I think I know where we ended up, but I was asleep in the backseat when we got there.
Okay, good. I think I can summarize, we had, you had some, you had some accountants trying to be attorneys? And interpreting what the cap was.
I thought that was just Bryn's move.
But, but it was, it was better to be set.
Particular thing I didn't have anything to do with, but it would be something I would do.
So rather than, you know, time and things moving, rather than to be, you know, to make sure we did what we, you know, we, we didn't want to do something that wasn't, again, we didn't, within our, the law. So we chose to go to local, we chose to cap the dollars to, and when we did that, if you took the role and by that lower rate, we had to go to that cap dollars, not cap rate, we had to get a lower rate to go to the cap dollars. That.
There, there, there was a notice placed, there's a required notice that's published.
But we published the dollars and the.
And we have to, and that's what we have to do. And, 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 so in that, in that posted notice, the, the calculation that was used to get to the rate needed to be adjusted. And so the question was, does the rate control or does the dollar control? The most conservative thing to do, because it, it was to the benefit, if we adjusted the calculation, it gave you a little bit more than if you adjusted it down. So the most conservative thing to do was to say the dollar amount controlled, not the rate. And thus, we need to remove a little bit from the budget if we, if it. But the actual attorney tells us that the rate controls, and so if you, if you multiply the rate by the updated value, you do not have to cut the two hundred from.
We voted on having the rate.
Right, which, which is what Kathy said is true, is what you voted on, not necessarily what is in the publication. But in the moment, we needed to make a decision. And to be conservative, we, we, we chose the, the more conservative in terms of the, the worst case scenario financially. So if the answer was, you have to go by the public notice on the dollars, that we would have a plan to say, this is how we would do this. And that's, that's what we went with.
That's good, and we can go through this now and understand it, we've done our, we've dealt with it. Yeah, I just don't understand, I think, sorry to take grass.
Okay. So Jennifer, you ready?
I'm ready, full disclosure, everybody has their changes, it's a work in progress, I first.
You got a week.
Actually, it's me just putting it out on the back end because so many changes coming along and me being able to back into those changes.
I'm sorry.
No, do not, do not, sorry.
Yeah.
Been a little bit of fun, but. And, and, and the other thing to understand that, that I pointed at, I had this last Friday, and it's basically all the racist things it was just talking about. And then what you see is you have what we had in the file budget, the projected revenues, the one hundred and fifty million, once again, this is only general fund, okay? And then based on the tax rate adjustment, as well as reducing the, or actually not reducing, completely taking out the park fee and the public safety assessment fee. Our revenue went from one hundred and fifty million to one hundred and forty-three million, and we can see over there in columns, L, that the reduction was almost seven million dollars to, that we cut. And so then my proposed expenditures went from one hundred and forty-five to one hundred and thirty-nine million, which was six point seven million dollars. And then some things that we do, we transfer out to the debt service fund, nothing in that area changed. The recommended use of found balance changed a little bit, obviously my capital equipment funding went down because it was correlated to those positions that we moved out into the future years. So that, you see, now it decreases. Our master plan is still in there, we came back and funded the small business enhancement grant program, the neighborhood enhancement grant program, the found balance. We wanted to add the street maintenance fee because we are looking to do the street maintenance special revenue fund next year. We needed to allocate two dollars for that, and then the temporal revitalization core funding that we gave them was off by one point, or one thousand one hundred dollars, so I had to correct that. But then, then we talked about what happened to change, which we, I talked about, the adjustment to the preliminary and spare highway wall. We removed all the special use fees that we had in there. We added in five hundred and fifty thousand based on the estimated fee adjustment that you guys had talked about, the ten percent across, and some of those fees. We made the adjustment to airfares revenue, and I don't know if Bryn has talked about that, but we actually took that event out. And then anyways.
The what up? The airfares. Oh, for next year?
Mm-hmm.
How much we lose out last year?
You wanna know?
Well, in, for budget, we took out the revenue, which was estimated at a hundred and seventeen eight forty, and the expenditures at two thirteen seven fifty. So that's part of what I cut to get to sixty-nine ninety-nine.
Was that because of the rain?
This is future budget, and I just, I, I was just looking for things that were not, had to do's.
Gotcha.
And if you wanna know what the loss was, we have that information.
Okay.
I can, I can present that.
So we were budgeting a loss, so does take out the revenues, but it takes out the expenditures, so it helped close that.
Gotcha.
But in effect cancels there.
It cancels the issue.
And there was also adjustment to the public safety services assessment fee that comes in from RZ for what we estimated in the file budget. And then there were some minor tweaks to revenues, you know, positive with that could be the deal itself.
And that to the RZ was related to, you know, we had preliminary values, we estimated it, and then we got certified roll, and they were different than the preliminary values.
And if you were to set a seventy-five cent tax rate, that's gonna generate a different revenue than if you set a sixty-nine ninety-nine. So it's not an, it's not actually decreasing, it's decreasing from what we put today, based on the seventy-five cent tax rate.
In terms of expenditures, I kind of missed some personnel things first. And the biggest chunk of that is gonna be tied to the number of positions that we were figuring in the file budget versus what I'm calling the proposed, proposed budget right now. We got sixty-seven, now we're down to thirty-seven, plus two, I added two last night, but once again, that's not a blip to get here. The adjustment to proposed refastens, salaries and other allocations on personnel. As part of the plan that was proposed initially with the file budget, it included a lot of refastens. And changing in allocation from water surfer or general fund to drainage fund, some of that moved around because of where the positions were gonna be housed at. So that was an eight hundred, almost twenty-five thousand dollar impact. There was an era in paramedic pay within the fire department that we corrected. And then I had adjustment to health insurance for existing positions. We adjusted what we were gonna do for fire extension. We're bringing them up to TMRS rate, but we're gonna now smooth it in over two years, so that's what that represents right there. And then I initially increased separation pay, you want this year twenty-six to be six hundred and fifty thousand dollars because there are some tenured people within the city that made, or actually, they made, they're eligible to retire. And I knew what happened next year, so I bumped it up to a hundred and fifty thousand additional dollars in twenty-six. But because of what the tax rate scenario was, I reduced it back down to just six, what was five fifty to six hundred thousand, which gave me a hundred thousand to add back in to try to get us down a little bit more. Other things that were done in terms of operating capitals, we missed anything related to the payment base to further, which was a million dollars operating expense, as well the payment condition survey, equipment consultant, we, we took that out, we pushed it to twenty-seven, and it's gonna sit in your street maintenance special revenue fund. You can see those things we took out too, the improvements on bill crest, along with our operating, and we included a piece of equipment of echo, the airfares, expenditures. My adjustment to contingency as of last Friday was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The adjustment to the operating costs for all the new positions that changed from sixty-seven to thirty-seven was a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Took out contract lasting management cycle, or cycle management system. We lowered the parks maintenance program, the recreation maintenance program, the facility maintenance program, five hundred thousand, we lowered Holly Jolly Fest expenditures. And then the last few were just some operating things that, they were high enough, I put them on there, but they weren't small enough to consolidate into my eighty-eight thousand dollars, who am I saying about, I mean, that's it. We always reevaluate electricity, we always reevaluate water sewer, we always reevaluate fuel when the two thousand adopted, because we wanna make sure we're budgeting correct.
If we could refine it.
So the air show, we're not doing the Holly Jolly, so you're not spending as much?
Well, so. Holly Jolly represents a whole bunch of events that they do during that timeframe, one of them is ice skating rink. And I don't remember the date, but council already authorized the contract to engage someone to help do contracted services for the ice skating rink. The thirty-eight fives is spread across the multiple events that they do for Holly Jolly.
That represents primarily cutting out some of the enhancements that we were gonna recommend for the Christmas parade. Couple other little things, but again, looking for those discretionary funds.
So it will still allow the ice rink to move forward, doesn't, it doesn't cancel Holly Jolly, it just takes out some.
But it does cancel Airfest.
It does cancel, cancel Airfest.
How much is typically budgeted for council expenditures?
Council?
Mm-hmm, like when we do AUSA or something like that? I don't think anybody's knowing this year, is that?
Just to give us some, and I think, I hope that, you go to their budget.
I'd also like to pull out, and just a reminder that what's our, what's the balance of our contingency today? But whatever is in contingency, it requires a council budget adjustment, a council proof adjustment to move it out.
Gotcha.
Just to, while there, we put money there, it should require your approval to be in the force, put toward anybody.
It's nine thousand. I'm, USA, well, he had twenty-three for all travel and training, but nine thousand specifically for USA.
Does that, twenty-three, is that just council or is that all?
It's council. But it includes textile transportation for chamber of commerce events, USA training and council retreat.
I mean, we can just go to Mike's house.
Yeah.
The contingency as of this moment, for this whole year twenty-sixth, is sitting at a hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Oh, that's the same question, just in reverse, okay, so you got an extra two hundred thousand, so we go to sixty-nine ninety-nine, you don't have to cut two hundred thousand. Where do you think you, you have any ideas where that would go?
I'll let you. Dr. Bryn?
So remind me, Jennifer, on the four hundred and five thousand that we talked about yesterday related to, okay, let me answer that in two different ways. So we have approximately four hundred and five thousand dollars that is eligible to be programmed based on the selected vendor for health insurance related to general fund.
Yeah.
My, I believe, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, I believe how I ask that to be, recommend that to be programmed is an animal services manager, a real estate manager for our places and spaces and TRC program. And that is related to an effort to have someone who can bring together all of the lots, the properties that the city owns, that we are maintaining right now, that we may not have a ongoing use for, and having a program that puts those lots back into the private sector to be maintained by someone else. I believe we did, did we do a hundred thousand, I restored the, Jennifer offered that a hundred thousand on a separation pay. I think that that's not wise to do because I think we're gonna, there's gonna be some people who separate. And I think that, so a hundred thousand, and then the balance of that, I, that four hundred and five thousand dollars that was available for health insurance, I recommended that we put into contract mowing services. I am not proposing yet that we hire a crew member or an additional crew. I would like to get the real estate person to evaluate the, 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 the ongoing needs for the future, but then have temporary contracts to provide a relief valve for next year while we're doing that work. So that is how I recommend the four hundred and five thousand.
And how much was that, at four oh five minus the hundred? Basically, what's left for contract mow?
Y'all. And we just did a, we just opened bids for contract mowing services for, just to give you some perspective, for I think it was the Pepper Creek Trail and Disc Golf area, and that was right at sixty-eight, the low bidder was right around that number. So that's kind of the scale of what you could, and that was for twenty-three mows, so basically twice a month mows for that area. So I think we could, and, and I, I don't think we would probably use it for parks, I think we would ask it to be allocated in district services or transformed temple for that program. Because I think that's where the needs are with, you know, all those various lots that we have acquired over the, over the course of many years for various reasons. But, I mean, I won't know what the actual cost is until we determine what we're gonna contract out and, and take it out. But I feel, I feel like that gives us a buffer while we, while we assess the more permanent disposition of some of those properties that are costing us money to maintain.
And that, so that the real estate manager and the TRC should eventually make us money.
That's my, that would be my goal, yes.
Yeah.
Or save money from.
Save mowing, but hopefully we can sell some.
Yes.
Property. Yeah, it'd be. So, so like taxes, yeah, they're gonna put it back on tax rolls and that should be that gain at some point.
We need to get to the point where there's certain right away, the mowing. We needed right away for something that we took, took more than we needed.
Yeah.
And now we're mowing it, it might go back to the chase of property, you know, the, you get that back on the roll, we no longer have to mow it.
Exactly, Tracy, thank you. So that is the goal, is to develop that program. That will take, you know, that, that won't happen overnight, so that is why I would recommend some contract mowing services. And then after we have a good picture, I think moving forward, I could feel more confident in, do we need more crews or do we not need more crews? But that would, I think, allow the, the the priorities that I understand from y'all, I think that would serve those. So the extra two hundred thousand.
Is that gonna come out of that four oh five?
No, that, so that, go back to Carl, your question, that would be additional to that, but I did wanna just highlight where that money was recommended.
That, that bottom line, then.
Yeah.
So that's not the two fifteen. We're going from six nine 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 to six point seven five, back to something.
Don't look at that two hundred, what we, that, she's got, she used that, that's a different purpose for her, but it was just a good, good thing for us to look at. So the four.
Do we know about that when we had the four oh five, that you just said everything?
The four oh five is, is, the two fifteen is addition to four oh five. But I, before I answered about the two fifteen, I wanted to share where the four oh five, which was related to health insurance savings or reduced cost. The two fifteen, we, the budget team has not talked about how we would allocate that. But of course, we talked through some different priorities as we were assessing the four oh five.
I'm gonna make sure, if we go six nine seven five, we're two fifteen less, right?
But we have already.
Go to six nine nine, then we're just where we were.
If you go to six nine seven five, that is, we have already captured what we would do to make that happen, and that includes, for example, reducing separation pay from where we thought we should budget it, but you know, it's just, again, so you, you can put two hundred and fifteen thousand back in the budget from what Jennifer just went over with you, if you adopt a sixty-nine ninety-nine tax rate. In addition to that, you can add four hundred and five thousand dollars in general fund expenses back to the budget because of the health insurance.
She took two fifteen up, it's already.
It's already out there, the four oh five though is not back in there yet.
Nah. Right, that's only a lot of things.
And, and I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry it's kind of overlapping, but what she took out to address the two fifteen, I used part of the four oh five to put it back. So because I didn't know that, that the two fifteen was gonna be an option, so I'm, I'm sorry for the confusion, but I, I would guess, we, you know, if y'all have some, if you agree with the, the use of the four oh five, which again is animal services manager, real estate manager to address. If you agree with the, the use of the four oh five, which again is animal services manager, real estate manager to address, um. Uh, just surplus lots and how we, how we handle that program going forward. Um, contract mow and in, and, uh, restoring the, uh, finance team's recommended budget for separation pay. Then if you agree with that, then you have two hundred and fif- and you're gonna adopt a, a tax rate of sixty-nine ninety-nine. Then you have two hundred and fifteen thousand more dollars that you can give us direction on how you would like that. So, you know, for example, you could restore the air fest, you could, um, add additional mowing, you could, um. You could, uh.
Restore the air fest and add, and take the remainder to contingents.
Yeah, you could just add it all to contingent. There, there's a lot of different options, so perhaps if you, if, if there's any. Thing in particular you would like us to, um, to have direction on, or we could talk about it and bring a recommendation back to you. Um, so that's where we're at, though, we have, I feel like I really confused the issue, I'm sorry. You've got two hundred and fifteen thousand additional dollars. If you do six nine nine nine.
Let's do sixty-nine ninety-nine and give you the discretion to spend the two hundred thousand. Can we flesh out a little bit the need for a real estate professional? Versus. What are the options other than a real estate profession?
The reason that I proposed a real estate, um, manager is because.
And we're talking about bringing somebody on staff to do that.
That was already proposed in the overall plan. If you'll recall, we have really three major capital programs. We have, um, mobility, utilities, I guess four, facilities. And places and spaces, places and spaces is parks, neighborhood, uh, plans. And, uh, similar type of projects. I had a real estate, uh, manager position recommended in engineering to support. Uh, mobility and, uh, utility projects, so that person would be responsible with. For working with Kathy and her team on acquiring all of the right of way necessary for mobility and utility projects. I also had a second real estate person, uh, associated with the other two programs, facilities and places and spaces. That program, I think, generally speaking, we don't have as intense right of way acquisition needs. So that would be the real estate position that I would give the surplus lots duty to. So it would, it, they wouldn't just do that, they would also acquire property related to facility. Uh, and places and spaces, uh, projects, but I do believe they would have capacity to manage the surplus lots program.
Is that from what I mentioned to you, Bren? What I, what I was intending there when I mentioned that to Bren is, we have a lot of property. I know right near my house that I see that's got tall grass, we can't get to it, they're pretty valuable properties. If we can sell it, we get money, we get it on the tax rolls and it gets moved. Uh, that, my purpose for that would be to. Give the city back money.
No, I, I totally understand that.
That was my intention with asking Bren about.
So in the past. We've used. State side. For acquisition. And we had Tawana Staff, Mr. Mears handled a lot of that. I don't know if she, if she, I guess, did she's just mostly closed what stateside. Have brought forward, or is she out there?
I guess that depends.
Example, she was like on Avenue, what's a project that like a hundred pieces of right of way? Hold on, I mean, the more, the more robust our TCIP.
Sure.
Was, I mean, we had, it was a lot of acquisition to, and it was the need to outsource.
Right, if it's a large property with large acquisitions and we know that a lot of it is going to go in the domain, we get. Um, stateside or Seven Arrows or some of the other on Florida sooner. If it's smaller parcels or kind of ones that come up, um, ability to purchase, you know, property that's through the park, different things. Those are the ones that actually, now Jake, um, handles those in-house and then we get with the title company and they close it. But it really just depends upon the scope of the project.
But right now, we don't have any project manager in-house managing real estate acquisition process. So we either contract that out, but there's still a great deal that falls on, even when you, when you've hired someone to help you with that. They're still bringing you offers, you still have to respond to it, you still have to tell them what you want acquired. And so we, right now, we're using an attorney to do that, which. He's great at it, I mean, we're, we're thankful for him, but he isn't, he. I think probably in most cases, you would have a project manager doing that. And then the attorney would step in to help with the documents, not, not manage the right of way acquisition process from start to finish. So the idea was to divorce that from, uh, needing to be an attorney. So the attorney would step in for still the closing documents, help obviously any legal questions, just like they would. Any other type of the, the project management, but we would have a dedicated right of way project management resource. That has been, uh, I would say a significant issue in delivery of projects on time. Because the right of way, you can't build a road or a water line till you have the right of way. And sometimes, you know, that takes us a really long time because we don't have anybody dedicated to doing that job.
Well, that and also it helps with the communication stream because right now we've got. You know, engineering and public works and their piece of it, and then we have outside engineers and their piece of it, and then we have our piece of it. And sometimes it's hard to get all of that information together and there's, it's not uncommon. That we will go through the, um, easement or right of way acquisition and then we get. You know, finally negotiated the deal, we're about to go to the closing and then we find out, oh, we're having to change the design for some reason. Well, now you need to go back and get more right of way or more easement, so it's, it's.
Or there's multiple projects intersecting onto a single property owner, which also happens more and more frequently. So there'd be a, there'll be a drainage project that's being managed by one consulting engineer and, and project manager. And a roadway project, um, that's, that's managed by a different consulting engineer. And they happen to at some point intersect the same property and that isn't, there's, there is, there is no one. Uh, responsible for kind of understanding the full scope of what right of way to, so, so you be, be coming to. Kathy's team with, we need this drainage easement and then it could be four months later, now we need this. You know, this additional, we just need fee simple title to this because now we have, you know, a different project here. That's not good for the taxpayers because that's, that's inefficient, but it's also not good for the property owners that we're dealing with. You put yourself in their shoes, maybe, you know, you think, oh, I'm, I've done, you know, I've, I've, cause that can be very stressful for a person. Having personally gone through that with a public entity, if you're not, if, if you're not, if you weren't planning on selling your property. And someone knocks on your door and says, hey, guess what, like it or not, you're selling some of your property. That's, you know, that, that's can be stressful and thinking you got through that and then, you know. Six months to a year later, you're back again and saying, hey. Remember us? Uh, we need some more, you know, that, we just, we, we, we don't have a project manager for right of way.
But just one more example, it was almost a really good deal for a particular, um, property owner. Because we almost purchased their property twice where it intersected. And Jake and I were sitting down looking at, you know, the road project and then this drainage project and then. Like, well, let's just look at this on the map, like, are we about, are these two happening at the same time, these two projects? And are we about to buy some right of way this way and then a drainage easement that goes across it? And so he took it back to the engineers and they looked at it and go, oh, yeah. We really are, these two projects do intersect, so there was no one, it just, luckily, the timing of it, when we were looking at it, it just. We thought to ask the question, there's no one who's keeping an eye on those things, so. I support you.
So we had that proposed, but we had it proposed in a future year. The idea would be to, to. Bring that priority forward, which would, would obviously, the, I think. The, I, I would say that from my, my perspective, the main reason I proposed it was not for surplus lots. But for right of way acquisition, but that position can then also manage that program. And knowing that that's a priority accelerated the priority in my mind of that position, if that is, makes sense.
What else?
I know it's so minimal, so, but if everyone needs to, you know, since they're built a little tighter. I think council needs to sweep some of their money. Seems kind of healthy for what we do, I mean. I'm a cheap date. Um, even, uh, is anyone going to AUSA? So we, we, so there's nine, I know it's minimal, but, um, I believe that they. The telegram posted what the council and clean, how much they're budgeted and, and what they're using it for. And got kind of detailed one time, it'd be nice for us to say, well, we're, we're giving up as well, so, just a thought.
I think it's probably more relevant for clean to go. Than for us in new ways.
Yeah, but I think they had, theirs was a little more beefy.
Oh, you know, they, they, a whole group goes.
But not just USA, I mean, their, their whole budget.
Congress Code has a policy, I just know this because the top Congress Code mayor, she was six months out. That if, they have a council member that is six months out from. Rolling off for whatever reason, that they don't allow them to go anywhere, they don't spend more money on. Six months out, they're like, no, you're staying home. I don't see anything matter with that.
I, I would just, I would just say, you know, that travel and training to just keep in mind, like, for example. Mayor and Zoe and I are going, um, next, in a couple of days. Um, to, uh, you know, I make development prospect visit. Um, so we don't budget for those specifically, so we, I think we have probably historically.
Kind of dipped in there.
I think it's really just a travel and training budget, I don't think it's really an AUSA budget, so just, you don't cut it so close that you can't. Cause y'all, y'all don't, I, I feel like for, for this, I, I would say if you, if there was. If you were going in direction in, on travel and training, this, I, I think y'all are on the low end of what you use. In terms of, y'all, y'all don't really, uh, you know. Go anywhere, so, uh, I don't, um. I don't think you're abusing that is what I'm trying to say, I don't think there's any.
Real business, uh, we need to do if that's real business, but yes, any, any, anything that can be seen is just kind of. Us representing and it's fun for us, yeah, I'm.
So we'll leave that up to y'all, just having said that.
We'll, we'll talk about it because we haven't had a chance to do that.
Sure.
Anything else on this, Adam?
Do you want to address any of the capital?
Oh, yes, yes, I do, thank you. Do you wanna pass those out? I think we can just post the paper.
Kind of looked at everyone left and right at me and they had their. I have, I did not. I have a view of my park, so I look outside and it's with, you know, a little diaphe, I'll run it there. I have a dog that freaks out with thunder, so. I just, I finally got a one, she's, she's a big girl, I had to get her a bigger size. So, uh, put it on her yesterday, this cry, so we'll, we'll see.
I've heard big reaction.
I don't think it's gonna work with her. It's the only time we let her in our bed. Next to our bed where they sleep, but when thundering.
Just as a fun exercise, I got online and I looked at my city's temple taxes last year, just this morning. And with this increase, my taxes are going up twenty-five dollars a month. The sixty-nine ninety-nine, my taxes are going up. Twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Is that just your, just my resident?
Yeah, just city temple, and then if we adopt the, uh. Six nine seven five. It saves seventy-nine cents a month. So, I know we've been over here.
Yeah, those are the kind of thing we need to be sure.
Man, you know, my home has an exemption, right, all it, but still, it, it's, it's twenty-five bucks a month.
I would do that exercise at an age of mine and it was a couple hundred dollars.
For the year?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's just a little fun fact. Things city does. But sorry, we ready to move forward?
Uh, I, a little bit more on budget here, um, so what you have in front of you is a, um. Is a listing of our, uh, capital plan. And, um, just a few different scenarios, uh, to keep in mind. So, um, as we have made an adjustment to, um, uh, tax rate, wanting to keep that under seventy cents. I also wanted to show you what the impact of that would be going forward related to capital. Um, so capital is a little bit different in that, in what you, what you decide to issue. In bonds this summer will affect the tax rate next year. So this is not really a this year decision, but as I just wanted you to have this information, um. So you have time to think about it, but I just wanted to be clear how a staying under a seventy cent tax rate. In the future was going to impact, um, the availability of funding for capital. So you have all of the projects that were in the original proposal, which is a three hun- and, and again, this is tax supported. So this is, does not include our utility or the investment zone, but just our, would include our mobility capital program. Our places and spaces capital program, public safety and facilities, so those are the areas that, that are tax supported and that this would address. So this is the original scenario that would have been three hundred and forty million dollars in total additional projects over the six-year business plan. Um, and then, and you can see there on the front sheet, the, um, that's the, the CIP scenario one. It shows you what the available funding for, um, allocation towards capital projects was in each year. And then it shows you that, uh, for this particular scenario, it would have had a tax rate impact in twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And again, not a twenty-six issue, but just wanting to, to kind of, uh, provide the, these, uh, information now. Because it is adopted in our overall plan. The bottom scenario, um, the scenario three. Uh, is what would be available if we did not want to have any tax rate impact. And we just wanted to use growth in the tax base and what we often call sawtooth, you know, as, as that, uh, drops off. You can, um, you can issue more, uh, debt, so, um, if you were going to assume a scenario. Where, and Tracy has included growth projections, so. So if we grow faster than what she projected, then there would be more available. If we grow slower, then there will be less available, but just reasonable projections. This is what you would be looking at. So again, the original scenario had three hundred and forty million in capital. You can do two hundred and six million in capital without, uh, any tax rate implications over the six-year timeframe. So that would, that would mean you would need to remove a hundred and thirty-three million dollars of projects. If you didn't want to, um, have a tax rate impact in the future related to capital. Um, of course, if you do want, if you want to go over that amount, two hundred and six million. Then you can do, um, the pro- at least based on current law, you can do these projects. Um, through COs or at your discretion, you could also, uh, do a general obligation. Uh, that is, uh, debt proposal and do a bond election, uh, with, uh, for, for projects that would. If you wanted to go, if you wanted to send any potential tax rate in, uh, increase to the voters, you could, you don't have to, but you can't. So we just wanted to show these two options for you. Um, scenario two is kind of a middle ground where you wouldn't, you, you certainly wouldn't do the full. Um, uh, plan, but it would allow you to do more than, um, if you had no tax rate impact. And I think the important thing, the most critical thing to note, especially for tonight or for, for this year. Is if you look at that FY twenty twenty-six number in scenario three. Is thirteen million, six hundred and ten thousand dollars. So that is the only amount of capital that we could issue this May without. Committing to a tax rate increase next year. Um, we had planned, we, we had proposed fifty-one million. So that, that is a lot, that's a big difference. In this, you know, in, in a, in a, not tonight, not tomorrow, you know, but, but that we'll need to make some choices. Um, relatively, you know, in the next few months about what we do. Um, thirteen million isn't a lot in terms of, of capital means. It, uh, we've talked about, uh, briefly and, and, and not in detail because we don't have the landfill master plan back yet. But just preview, we have about twenty mil- twenty years of life left on our landfill. We're going to need to make some decisions, uh, because it takes ten to fifteen years to develop an extension to a, a landfill. Depending on whether you, uh, expand an existing landfill or you build a new landfill. Uh, whether that is a contested permit hearing or not a contested, you know, so there's some factors. But, um, it, it takes a while, so it's twenty years, sounds like a long time from now. It is not a long time from now in terms of, of landfill life. Um, so you're going to have, we're going to have some immediate decision, some, some relatively immediate decisions to make. That would really be the only thing you could do this year related to capital, if that's what we decided to do and we, and we didn't. Want, and again, it's not a tax rate this year, but it's a, a next year tax rate impact. It would be a two, uh, a, a two-point-three cent tax rate impact next year to do the fifty-one million. And, and this, uh, uh, this that Sherry prepared shows you all the projects. That, you know, you can do with that or others, you know, but that's the, that is the dollar amount. Um, and then, uh, again, assuming, assuming we don't want to have a tax rate increased. We want to keep the capital within the current tax rate and that would be about a two hundred and six million dollar. Uh, over the six years. With a really, you know, kind of tight choke point this coming year. So that's the main issue. But, um, it just, we, uh. That would, that would basically take your major projects off the table. Um, except for the fire station. So you could, if you, if you had a priority to keep the fire stations on track and funded through the general fund. Then you would need to take off the police expansion. Um, the, uh, Hartrick Bluff Road, Little River Road. Southwest Community Park, improvements to Hillcrest, improvements to Midway. Really the, but kind of the big rocks, you really can't do without, um, if you. It, it, it's kind of a, we can do all of the, 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 um. Fire stations, but I, you won't be able to, and you, and you can do some of the big rocks if you take off a lot of the smaller projects. But you can't, I just wanted to be clear, we can't keep all of those projects on the table, all under a seventy cent tax rate. And I just want to make sure you have that information. You've got the full list, so you can take your time in reviewing it and understanding, you know, what's, what. How we would need to make adjustments going forward. But the big thing I wanted to flag for you was a decision point. For next year's tax rate is, will come this year at some point related to what we want to do in capital. Because the impact of capital comes the next year, not the year you're in.
And the reason for that is, is we, um, you know, bonds you pay interest in semi-anualized principal once. We issue around May.
Yeah.
And then we don't have any interest in principal on this year in the year until the next fall.
And this spreadsheet nets out any maturing bonds, right?
Yes, that's, that's what when we refer to the sawtooth. We're, we're layering in issues. Uh, when we have that capacity, we layer again to maintain existing tax rate.
It, it layers in maturing bonds and it layers in. A fairly. I mean, uh, it, it layers in a fairly realistic but aggressive growth projection. So, um, I think it's ten and a half percent next year and then a declining, uh, percent. So again, if we, if we have a big project land and we, we got more than that, then that, that will make this number go higher. If, uh, economy slows down and we have less than that, then that will make this number go lower. Uh, but it's a, I think, a reasonable projection for you to rely on, on what, what you're looking at. And so I just, I wanted to flag that, um, there will be a choke point in capital. Without a tax rate decision for future years. Nothing you have to decide tonight, but just wanted to, to be clear with that.
No, but that's really good information. Thank you.
I'll say, uh, just again, very mentioning the mayor approach. Um, Walker, when you mentioned before about, you know, I think it's in scenario, it is scenario one. The eighty-two point one million with those fire station, uh, seven, nine and ten. If you wanted to take those to voters, whatever, Geo Vod, you would do that. November of twenty-six, you could do that. So it gives you this, as Brent said, it gives you the option.
Yeah.
You can still do those COs, but if you wanted to go to Geo, you could.
And this is so that the scenario three is what you have to work with without a tax rate impact. Anything, so you can, you can select what, you know, what we would want to fund with that. And if you wanted to fund anything above that, you could select whether you wanted to do that through COs. Or through GOs with, with a bond election. Or a combination of the two things. Doesn't have to be all one way or the other. I think that is what we have for budget this afternoon, ma'am, unless you all have other questions or dialogue like that.
Counsel, anything?
Just informational questions, um, Parker's luck south of ninety-three. Is there anything in the, or anything in the plans or north of ninety-three?
North of ninety-three is a, um, funded project. The money is in the bank. And is in vetted already in the tax rate that we have already adopted, not even what you're adopting tonight. So that project is preparing to bid and will move forward. Um, soon, so future would just be south of ninety-three. Yes, it, it, um, it has been a project we've worked on for a long time and back to the. Right-of-way conversation.
I would like to see a graph that shows the people that write letters and that are concerned with, with. Infrastructure and whether or not it's being built along with those that are willing to pay more tax. I would like to see that track together. Um, tells me. All right. So counsel, anything else? Um, as always, before we get off the budget piece, I'm always amazed at the words that you guys do in the detail. And you know, hopefully we just, we talked about six hundred grand and we're to put it, they're like, wait. There's eighteen spreadsheets behind me that will support this decision. So thank y'all for that. It's, it's not lost on me ever. And as a person that is, uh, that hates details, I respect that you guys. It really is. It is incredible and even rolls something like this out.
They're the best of the best.
You know, when I asked Sherry to make this? Close, ten o'clock.
I can turn it up. Oh, seriously, seriously, I, um, I. Um, the longer I do this, the more I appreciate the work that gets done and I'm amazed at. And I know we're going to say thank y'all right next week, whatever, like we always do. But this is, this is amazing work and it really helps us know what we're voting on.
I'll add, I'll add to that. I've, I've been through several budgets and we've never had this tight of a crush and had to get into this much detail on that. Really lets us see a lot more of what y'all do.
Yeah, but every budget mic that we've worked on, they've done this amount of work.
Yeah, they had, I saw the same. We're, we're just getting to see it now. We're getting to understand it, but.
Yeah.
I'm very impressed with the presentation of the error.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Would I, would I ask my question I probably shouldn't have asked?
You learn that over time. Something's just been left unasked.
Someone just said this and you can tell where my mind is because I forgot who just said it, that you said, someone said they do this amount of work every year. I will, I will say they did far more work this year than they, I mean, I.
You put it.
I am, I am indebted to the, the three, uh, ladies back there and their teams. Because I have asked for a lot this year and I really, I mean, I hope they know this, but I really appreciate all of the work, all of the hours. All of the ten o'clock, hey, can you do this in a couple of hours for me scenarios? And hey, and, and somehow keeping it all straight with the forty-five different scenarios that I gave. I really, really appreciate it. I know it was a lot.
And we asked you for a lot because I think we gave you forty-five different scenarios.
And they're not swags. So, very good. Thank y'all. Okay, are we ready to move on?
Randy, you can buy them lunch out of our council budget.
Okay, thank you. I will.
Or a little freeze.
All right, next item is, uh, it is currently ten minutes after four. I'm not wearing the same watch, although if you guys know, I did change my other watch just now. It took about thirty minutes to change the time on that watch. Um, but it is ten minutes after four. At this time, council will enter into executive session to discuss, um. Uh, receiving a discussion, receive and discuss a, a briefing regarding potential real property acquisitions or sales along I thirty-five. For certain texts, government code section five five one oh seven two, council may meet in closed session. To discuss or deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease for value of real property. If deliberation in an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. No final action will be taken. It is now ten minutes after four.